Welcome, welcome everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council. Today is Monday, July 17th. I'll request the deputy city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Jornz Galati is absent. Mayor Kate.
Present, thank you. So, thank you for being here this evening, whether in person, we have quite a few people in chambers, or online virtually. As always, I want to thank staff for the incredible work they do day in and day out to keep our city running so smoothly. So I'm sure we're all getting used to the hot weather. We haven't had that very recently. We haven't had it before the last couple of days, and it definitely reminds us of the constant threat of wildfires. So I want to just take a quick moment and to thank all of our residents who are taking a necessary action on their personal property to harden their home. They're removing vegetation, they're covering the grates and their porches, and whatever else San Rafael Fire Department deems is necessary. We know that they've been going out and both leaving letters as well as mailing letters from properties. So, thank you for doing your part to really keep our city safe. And if you've been lucky enough to look up in our open space, our goats are continuing to munch their way through open space, and they are doing their part to reduce the wildfire risk as well. So, just wanted to mention that. I know if you're like me, you've been thinking and worried about fire with this heat. Before we get to the meeting, we like to include a land acknowledgement, and what I'll read has been provided by the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria. And outside of me just reading this acknowledgement, we have a partnership with the tribe to take actions on the issues that are important to them. So, "We acknowledge that present-day city of San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Miwok people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria. We thank the original caretakers of this land and honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all." Thank you. I will ask the deputy city clerk to describe how people can participate in tonight's meeting, who are both in the room and not in the room.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. This meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube, and members of the public can provide public comment by phone by calling 669-444-9171, using the meeting ID 860-6190-5675-POUND, and pressing *9 to raise your hand for comment. Or you can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda and using the raise hand feature through Zoom. If you experience technical difficulties, please email city.clerk@cityofsanrafil.org. Display it on the podium and the projector as a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you reside in, or if from outside of San Rafael. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. Select the Live Transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature.
Thank you. And for some folks, this might be the first time they've attended a council meeting. We started with an open time for public expression. This is an opportunity to address the council on anything not on tonight's agenda. And we have quite a robust consent calendar and public hearings, but if there's any item that's not on tonight's agenda, I welcome you to speak. And there were some that filled out cards. If you didn't fill out a card, don't worry. But I will start with the folks that did fill out a card. Erica Blair.
Hello, my name is Erica Blair. I live on Margarita Drive on the border of Country Club and Dominican. And I'm coming to speak about the parcel that was sold by Dominican University and is now proposed for development. The majority of my property line borders that parcel, and I was reviewing the San Rafael master plan to see what mention it had made of development in the area. And I just wanted to make sure that the city council understood what the master plan had laid out for that parcel. It says, "Program NH2.14B Dominican Hillside Parcels. Work with Dominican University and neighborhood residents to plan for the undeveloped hillside parcels located east of Deer Park Avenue and south of Gold Hill Grade. Much of the property is steep and heavily wooded. Other portions have the potential for housing, including student housing and faculty-staff housing, which is a significant local and community need. In the event housing is pursued, the permitted density should reflect site constraints. Development should conform to the city's hillside residential design guidelines and include provisions for substantial open space. The neighborhood should be involved in the planning and review process, which would include an amendment to the master use permit and the PD district zoning." I'm coming here to ask that we consider the things that were laid out in this master plan as proposals get put forth for this particular site. In particular, the idea that there should be substantial open space preserved within the parcel that was named for housing development, and also that the neighborhood should be part of the planning and review process. I don't know what capacity there is to involve the neighborhood more deeply, but I know there's a lot of interest, and especially that the density should reflect site constraints, especially evacuation capacities. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. And because items aren't on the agenda, I can't comment, give a great, long answer, but I will say there is a webpage on the city website where you can follow, I'm looking at the city manager, where you can follow the latest updates as to that project.
Yes, and Mayor Kate, you can subscribe to get updates if you put your email in the form.
So then you'll know when there's opportunity. Thank you. Thank you, Erica. Richard Schultz.
I'm Richard Schultz. I live in Terre Linda. And in the shopping center where the old Sears used to be, as well as Macy's, there was a sign, "It's not there now." And I believe the number of units that they want to build there was about 1,400, or not number of units, I'm sorry, but number of people that they were trying to get, you know, there. And I just think that's, I just want to know where we are, because the sign's been recently taken down.
Thank you. And as with the prior speaker, we also have a webpage on that project as well, where you can sign up to receive updates when there are opportunities for the public to participate. Okay. Angela Tucker. And Angela, you're more than welcome to address us now. I see you wrote Weston Block Party. That is an agendized item. Wait, okay. I'll put this here. Anyone else who'd like to address the council on any items not on tonight's agenda? Just come on down, state your name. You don't have to, if you'd like to, and where in San Rafael you reside.
Hi. I actually live in Westmoreland, but I have a business in San Rafael. My name is Nicole Scobola, and I'm one of the owners of Cosmic View. We're a medical cannabis company. We were the first licensed manufacturer in San Rafael. We are one of two manufacturers who are still alive and in business. I emailed a letter several weeks ago to explain why we believe a micro-business license would improve our chances of survival during this very difficult time. I will briefly go over those points again tonight. For those of you who are not aware, the cannabis industry is in a state of active collapse. Our sales plummeted by over 70% from April to June, and we are barely hanging on. There are a few reasons for this, and a big one is the limited availability of shelf space in legal dispensaries. These retail storefronts were already limited by local control issues, and now many are going out of business and/or limiting their shelf space in smaller categories such as medical products to larger corporate competitors who can buy up shelf space and squeeze out small brands. Additionally, a wholesale-only business model is quite frankly untenable. There is literally no other consumer packaged good industry that limits sales to wholesale only. Even beer and spirits allow craft businesses to sell to consumers in a limited capacity. A micro-business license has its limits in terms of revenue and different operations, and it's important to note that we do not intend to launch retail delivery service. Rather, we would be able to sell to consumers at private events, something very difficult for us to do now. After the exorbitant taxes, fees, and zero federal tax write-offs after cost of goods, wholesale-only model with no opportunity for retail markup is simply untenable. Manufacturers are now the highest tax-paying licensees in San Rafael. We make the least amount of money. We have very little market power, and we are dying. Please help us.
Thank you, Nicole, and for your emails. And I think Director Hinkel has emailed you as well, so he's in the room, so hopefully you can connect. Yeah, thank you. Welcome. Hi.
Hello. My name is Christine Scobola. I'm her mother. And we're co-owners of Cosmic View. Excuse me. I'm a retired professor and scientist from UC Berkeley and the University of Alabama Birmingham, whose prime research focus was on cancer as well as issues related to women's health, such as endometriosis. One of the reasons we first started Cosmic View was to share our knowledge and formulate products for specific health needs. Because these medical-based formulations require more education, we struggle with getting this information out to the customers, since many dispensaries have such a high turnover of their staff. So when we train them one week, the next week they're gone, and we're like, it's like a vicious cycle. Our greatest need to reach the public is to have a micro-business license where we can hold medical-focused events and be able to use our knowledge to educate the public directly. It would also allow us to sell retail instead of wholesale during these events. It would give us accessibility to medical patients, which are one of our prime patient populations. Over the years, I have worked directly with physicians and have been invited to do physician trainings at Kaiser and in several large private practices, which were also attended by medical patients. So it was the doctors and the patients. It was a great experience to be able to train everyone. It would be a game changer if we actually could hold similar types of events attended by physicians and patients, where we could provide education with the ability to sell our products to interested attendees. We put in so much effort to have a successful business while being ethical and honest in all that we do. Unfortunately, it takes more. If something doesn't change quickly, we won't be able to hang on much longer. We're asking you to allow current license holders to upgrade to a micro-business license. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Yeah, thank you, Christine.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Dave Rhodes. I live here in the West End, and I am co-chair of Walk Bike San Rafael. And it's our mission to make San Rafael a safer place to walk and bike every day, everywhere. As you're well aware, many people have been injured or killed on our streets from crashes with drivers. Driver speed is a major factor in a lot of these crashes. And also pursuant to our city's goals of sustainability and reducing greenhouse gases, transportation is responsible for 60% of our city's carbon emissions. Safe experiences for biking and walking can help people drive less and help us reach our sustainability goals. So I come to you tonight because our group wrote you emails, and we also submitted a letter regarding AB43, which is a state law that was passed last year that allows you to take action on lowering speed on key commercial corridors in our cities. And our group asks you to take this action on Fourth Street. It's really easy. It just requires, I think, something like a resolution. So we'll have to talk to the city council to do that, city lawyers to do that. In any case, we do ask you to do that, take that action, and it is designated as a pedestrian corridor and a bike corridor. And so please do everything you can to make our city safe for biking and walking, and you can start by doing this action on Fourth Street. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Dave. And thank you for the letters. We did get them. Thank you. Yeah, come on down.
Hello, Mayor and City Council and citizens of San Rafael. My name is Jeff Chase, and Jeff Jacob Chase, a member of the California Homeless Union. What I'd like to read is something from the portion of the Holy Torah for this week, that when people are asked where the law comes from, often they'll say common law from England, though there was a revolution, or they will mention the Romans or the Greeks. There's also a guy named Moses, and he said this. He said, "How can I bear your trouble and your burden and your strife?" He's talking to the Israelites, "all by myself. Prepare for yourselves, wise and understanding people known among your tribes, and I will make them heads over you. And you answered me and said, 'The thing you have spoken is good for us to do.' So I took the heads of your tribes, people wise and well-known. I made them heads over you, leaders over thousands, leaders over hundreds, leaders over fifties, leaders over tens, and officers over your tribes. And I commanded your judges at that time, saying, 'Hear disputes between your brothers, and judge justly, between a human and his sister and brother, and between his litigant.'" And that word in Hebrew is gerai, which also means stranger. It says, "You shall not favor persons of judgment. Rather, you shall hear the small, just as the great. You shall not fear any person. For the judgment is upon the Lord, and the case that is too difficult for you, bring it to me, and I will hear it." That's what Moses said. So, in the spirit of these words, I'm praying that all goes well tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else in the chambers before? Oh, one down?
Hi, my name is Michael Jobe. I live at 16 G Street, and I'd like to piggyback on this gentleman's comments about speed and access for bikes, particularly in the West End. We've had incidents at Fourth and G. And with all the new construction going on, I was hoping that we could get some speed bumps put in on G Street to slow traffic down. It's a thoroughfare for bikes for kids going to Davidson in the morning. It's also a thoroughfare for cars coming out of the Sun Valley area, and cars trying to make the light down at Second Street and Third Street, just speed down that road. And it's very dangerous. It's an old street, very narrow. So I was hoping that some kind of study could be done, perhaps, or look into putting some speed bumps. I know they have them in the Bret Hart area on Irwin Street, and it slows traffic down considerably. And thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Hello. My name is Greg Bromin, and I am a cannabis manufacturer with a company called Strictly Topical Incorporated. We have a product called Sweet Relief. It's a pain topical. And we're a family-owned business. We've been around since 2015. We've been very happy in San Rafael, extremely happy with the support we've gotten. Many of us came into the cannabis industry with a lot of love and a lot of desire to do good, and it's been very challenging to be in cannabis. So I'm here to speak, to request that the council consider an amendment to the cannabis rules to allow micro-businesses, like my friends over here we're talking about. And we're a little bit different company. We do things a little bit differently, but the amount of time that we've been in the business, we've really seen that in order for a small company, because we are very small, in order to survive, you have to be vertically integrated. You have to have all the different aspects of the business, not so much to make a tremendous amount of money by any means, but to have control over your product, control over your client base. So, all the money that you spend on marketing to try to get consumers, at this point, they just go to a retailer. So, being able to connect all the different pieces of sales and marketing, as well as the manufacturer, makes a huge difference for us. We think that it will actually create stronger cannabis businesses in San Rafael if people are allowed to have a micro-business license, because they'll be more prone to stay alive in the cannabis industry, especially as legalization happens. We're going to need to be strong in order to survive that change in the market. Boom. That's it, two minutes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Greg, if you could also give your information to Director Hinkel, because I know he has, oh, we did, okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Albatere Gersel Park. I walk around town a lot, so I do notice the changes that are being made to our community, and one of which is a block of land that is bordered between Fourth and Third Streets and A Street, where there are three abandoned buildings at 109 and 117 that have been so for maybe five, six, seven years now. They're just sitting there. And I don't know if that's part of the general plan to vacate that corner, because there's a bank on the opposite side on Second Street, which is also vacant, and neither one of these four that I mentioned are up for re-rentals. So I'm guessing that at some point they're going to be destroyed. But my request now is for that one building that sits across from Luton's, there's just big white space sitting there. And I'm wondering, since, if it would be possible to put a mural up there, something that looked halfway decent, rather than having this rather bland and depressing piece of property to look at every time I go downtown. So, simple request. A little more serious. Last week, when we had a succession of hot days, I thought I would go to San Rafael website to see if there were cooling centers. So I did a search there, and I did get a number of responses, but none of them were current. Most of them were from 2020 or prior. So my request is, if it is possible to add a date to the search results, so that you're looking at current material and not stale items that might not be helpful in an emergency or something less time-sensitive.
Thank you. And on your request of the public having a mural, we do have a public art review commission, and that's absolutely the type of thing that they review. And thank you on the Heat Center, just so you know, if we ever do activate one, I think we would advertise it, broadcast it through Nixol. Is that proper? Yeah. But I agree with you. Having stale information does not help anyone. So thank you, Mr. Atari. Okay. Anyone else in the chambers on any item not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Daniel Campbell, and I live at 366 Margarita. And I have three requests pertaining to the fire last June near Dominican University. The neighbors were never informed of the cause of the fire, and it was quite a scary moment, because we were at risk of evacuation. And in addition, there is now a developer who wants to put 81 units on the same property that was elit last June. And my understanding is that prior to the fire trucks coming into the neighborhood to address the fire, because the roads are only 12 feet wide, the fire trucks had to wait for residents to evacuate. So my question is, if these 81 units were to, assuming if the 81 units were constructed and occupied at last June's fire, how much longer would those trucks have had to wait for the fire to burn? So my three questions are, what was the source of the fire last year? How much longer would the trucks have had to wait if those 81 units were constructed? And then three, can you tell us also, what are the number-one leading sources of fires in San Rafael? Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. And if you don't already subscribe to the Dominican page, I think that would be helpful. And if you don't already subscribe to the Dominican page, I think that would be helpful. Okay. Anyone else on any item? Yep, come on down.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jim Davis. I live at 301 Highland Avenue in San Rafael. And regarding concerns for fire in the neighborhoods, I actually had a conversation with Fire Chief Bob Sinnett asking about that. And he also referred me to Quinn Gardner, who I also spoke with, who's, I believe, emergency evacuation or emergency response chair, or something along those lines. And I'd asked about the safety aspects of adding development, adding houses, adding subdivisions or planned developments to the area, specifically concerning us in the Dominican area where the developer is planning this. And he did explain to me that the existing, and I'm going to quote this as clearly as I can, "The existing infrastructure does not meet California fire code and is inadequate. Any new developments have to adhere to fire code, which includes 20-foot-wide roads, radius turns of sufficient dimension for fire trucks to make the turns, and also turnouts or turnarounds for fire trucks." And I asked, how was it possible to consider it to be safe if there's going to be new fire code-conforming infrastructure that feeds onto admittedly inadequate and not fire code-safe roads? And I didn't get a real answer out of that. So that's my concerns, that adding population and developments that could choke already inadequate, to quote him, roads and infrastructure does not seem like a good idea. So very concerned about the safety aspects.
Thank you. And maybe you can connect with Daniel, and so he can also talk to. Yeah, Chief Sinnett, thank you. And just so you know, the Dominican project, being that there is an application, it's going through the public process, so the council really can't comment on it. But I do encourage you to sign up if you want to know updates and when there'll be opportunities to have those questions answered, as well as input received, in addition to this evening. Okay. Anyone else in the chambers? Not seeing anyone, this is just for public time for open expression, anything not on our agenda. Not seeing anyone else in chambers, I'll turn to our virtual community.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And to comment by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. We do see about four hands at this time.
Yes, good evening, Council. My name is Matthew Hartzell. I'm the Director of Planning at WTB TAM. And tonight, I want to speak to you about Fourth Street. Fourth Street is really a treasure. There's no street quite like it in Marin County. It's definitely San Rafael's Main Street, and one could say it's Marin County's Main Street. No other city in Marin has a commercial downtown district of its stature, length, and density, and character of urban form. So it really is a street to be treasured. And it's a street for people. It's a street for pedestrians. It's a street for bicyclists. It's a street for people who support local businesses. And there's nothing that, the easiest possible thing the city could do right now to make Fourth Street more safe and prosperous for the businesses on it and for everybody who uses it is to utilize the state law, AB 43, to reduce the speed limit from 25 miles an hour to 20 miles an hour. When people are traveling slower, they have more time to see what's around them and see the businesses and stop. That five miles an hour actually makes a big difference when a pedestrian is hit by a vehicle. It can, it's a significant percentage increase in the risk of death and severe injury, just five miles an hour. So you can do this. Please ask the city council to ask your staff, city attorney, Department of Public Works, look into this, give you a staff report. The, we believe in our reading of AB 43, that fourth city, the city could move straight ahead ministerially right now and reduce the speed, and it would have tremendous safety and economic benefits for everyone in San Rafael and Marin County. So please, please have a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Hi, my name is Tylee Holden, and I'm at 220 Deer Park Avenue. I've spoken on this subject for the past few city council meetings and stand with my neighbors Jim and Daniel on our concern about the university parcel selling to Ray Cassidy. In the past meetings, you've said that right now isn't really the time for us to be concerned with the plans. It's a bit early. But we should be working with the developer, and I just wanted to update you there that he's asked us to not communicate with him and has not returned phone calls or emails from the neighbors. I know Blair just went through, or Erica Blair just went through the outline of the master plan agreement that said he'll work in conjunction with the neighborhood. So I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that we've tried, and we have been told from him directly, he does not want to work with the neighborhood. Just to recap, my house is the one that evacuated in that fire that we all talk frequently about last year. I have four kids. The street right outside my driveway is 12 feet wide, eight feet shy of the fire department code. We were unable to evacuate until we had the fire department move cars, because there are multiple cars coming up and down our road, and nobody could pass each other. And meanwhile, you know, the fire is heading toward my house. This is obviously a big concern for me. This is a road that everyone would use. Any home that's built will not necessarily be built on Deer Park, but will use Deer Park to go up and down the hill. There are also six homes in the pre-application plans to be built right on Deer Park, where the most narrow part is 12 feet as well, with no plans as of right now in the pre-application to expand the road. And this is obviously a concern to us. So I know I'll keep following the website and stay apprised, but I want to make sure this is top of mind, since we are not connected with the developer and his plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Tylee.
Hello, my name is Janice Zanetto, and I live on Lincoln Hill. I'm a member of Walk Bikes San Rafael, and I want to piggyback on what Matthew Hartzell was saying about the chance to lower the speed limit on Fourth Street from 25 miles per hour to 20. And one of the things I've noticed is even, I walk and I bike and drive on all three, on Fourth Street. And especially since the possibility to walk across a street in the middle of the block, jaywalking, has become legalized in California. I've noticed more people doing it, and I, on my bike, I've had to kind of cram on the brakes when somebody just kind of darted across the street. And I agree with Matthew that the lowering of the speed to 20 miles an hour gives a lot more time to process what's going on on the street, because the street is dense with the volume of people on it in all three user groups. So I'm hoping that you will consider making that five mile-per-hour reduction in speed to allow for a safer Fourth Street. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Janice.
David, we're ready for you.
Okay, yeah, my name is David Seltzer. I live in San Rafael and on Lincoln Avenue. And I've lived here for a number of years now, and I'm a member of Walk Bikes San Rafael. And I also wanted to add my voice to what others have said as far as utilizing AB 43 to reduce the speed limit on Fourth and making that a better, stronger destination for people, as well as a better bicycle corridor through San Rafael. I'm a big fan of downtown San Rafael. I love Fourth Street. I love going down there to the record shop, to my bike store, to Pond Farm, all these wonderful destinations. And I see Fourth Street really as a destination. And I think reducing the speed limit helps that feel more that way, makes it a safer, more inviting place for people to walk and bike and enjoy what it has to offer. And then additionally, as reducing the speed limit, making it safer for bikes or through traffic for cyclists, and improving our east-west connectivity for the city as well. So it just feels like a win-win to reduce the speed limit, make it a more enjoyable place for people, and a safer place for people on bikes to go through the city. So yeah, thank you for hearing these comments, and I appreciate your work. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Hi, my name is Susan Knoberry. I live in San Rafael. I also live off Lincoln. And I'm here to voice my support for lowering the speed limits in commercial areas in San Rafael. Under the power that our city now has from AB 43, other municipalities have done the same. San Francisco and Oakland did so almost immediately. It's increased the walkability and has reduced pedestrian fatalities. I also think that the city should put electronic signs or speed sensors in, because, you know, when somebody knows that they're speeding and that there's a sign telling them they're speeding, they're more likely to slow down. So I strongly recommend that the city look into that. And our city is fairly dangerous for people who walk and bike. Their, the east-west connectivity is very poor in downtown, especially if you are north of downtown. The Third Street connector will be excellent, but it doesn't really solve the connectivity issues for the people who are north of downtown. So I, I think that lowering the speed limits in Fourth Street would go a long way. It would also bring people to businesses, because they'd feel more comfortable walking and biking. And you're far less likely to stop and spend money at a business when you have to circle the walk 100 times looking for parking. But if you're walking or biking, you're more likely to spend money at these local businesses. So please take into consideration lowering the speed limit by five miles an hour to make our downtown more enjoyable. And thank you so much for your time and dedication to our wonderful city.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Eva Chrysante. I'd like to add my support for AB 43. Definitely could use some speed bumps in downtown San Rafael as well. I'm calling to follow up on where you are right now with body cam. I have an old letter from December 15th, from 2021, from your city attorney office stating that it is the privilege of your police officers to turn on and off their body cam at their own discretion. And this came as a response to my questions about Lynn Murphy, one of your non-sworn officers, who has a well-known penchant for turning on and off her body cam. But this was not restricted to Lynn Murphy. And in fact, it's somewhat of a miracle that anyone was able to retrieve the body cam concerning the beating of Mateo, whose real last name is Lopez, because your officers do not, they're not required to keep their body cam on when they are interacting with the public. So I'm hoping, in light of that letter, that you can, you can update the public on where you stand now, because the letter is pretty shocking. I'd also like to point out that at the June 5th meeting, you had a number of people from the so-called Marin Justice League to talk about civilian oversight. They did not disclose, most of them did not disclose that they were part of the county's very troubled Sheriff's Civilian Oversight Working Group. The conflicts of interest on that working group are what delivered not only very weak proposals, but an extra $3 million to the Marin County Sheriff. And I've written that up on MarinCountyConfidential.substack.com if you want an overview of the conflicts that the county failed to disclose, which resulted in that additional money going to the sheriff.
Thank you. Any other? Oh, okay, okay. We're ready for you, Maddie.
Sorry, wrong section.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to your comments later in the meeting.
Hi, David. You've mentioned a lot of websites that we should be looking at if we would like to get emails and participate in things. And I've looked for a few of them and can't find them. I'm wondering if you could tally all of them and put them in the next month, or next week, not next week, whenever, the next snapshot comes out, so that we can have links to them. I think that would be very helpful. The other thing is, I think that people need to talk to the San Rafael Police Department and sit out there with a radar gun one of these days, because I did that with a couple of different people. And it's amazing how fast people aren't going. I mean, we would tell them how fast we thought they were going, and they'd look at us and smile, and they weren't going nearly as fast as we thought they were going. So just reality. So, thank you.
Thank you. And you're right, on the website, it's always cityofsanrafil.org. And then there's a magnifying glass, a search engine. And if you put in Northgate or Dominican, hopefully it should come up. If it doesn't come up, let us know, and we'll fix the search parameters to make sure that it does come up. I'm sorry, one more? Okay. We're ready for you, Nathan.
Hi, thank you. My name is Nathan Cohen. I'm resident in San Rafael. And I also wanted to voice my support for lowering the speed limits in downtown. I think it's an excellent win that the council can take credit for, for improving safety and improving downtown more generally. As you've heard, you know, there will be big safety improvements from lowering speed limits. And it'll really make things more pleasant. And I really like the commentary we heard before, you know, talking about how people really enjoy downtown San Rafael. They want it to thrive. And I think this is just something we can, you know, an incremental improvement that will really be beneficial to everyone. You know, some of the times that I look back on really fondly are the times where, especially during the pandemic, the roads were closed. And, you know, you saw people walking on the closed streets. And really, there was a sense of camaraderie getting through a tough time during that time. And I think we can really have more of that spirit if we work on our infrastructure to improve walkability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council and San Rafaelians. My name is Heather Mariko Kram. I live in Montecito. And I just want to make sure that there's a lot of reference to lowering the speed limit. However, I want to make sure that it goes through at least some sort of a city review to ensure that the cure is not worse than the actual disease. And the reason why I bring this up is because the last 15 years I've lived in San Francisco, I've worked downtown, and I've also used to work at the Westfield San Francisco. And ever since that San Francisco has shut down car access to Market Street, the downtown not only has it changed, but also you see multiple businesses closing because of access. And so what I want to try to prevent is the San Rafaelians or other Mariners that want to enjoy downtown San Rafael that they can. And I really don't want it to turn into basically cutting off complete access via car to downtown San Rafael. I'd also like to piggyback on the Dominican Valley. I'd also would like to know exactly what was the cause of the fire. And also, I would like to mention the environmental impact that it could possibly have, building 81 homes in the area. Not only would it affect the traffic, it would also affect the ecosystem. There's quite a bit of wildlife that does travel through there. So I just want to make sure that we're also respectful of the environment. And that's really the whole point of San Rafael is the city with a mission. So thank you very much. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Heather.
I see no other hands at this time. I'll just give it a few more seconds. I see no more public.
I see no more public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and I'll request uh that our Director of Public Works just briefly talk about AB forty-three. It was obviously a hot thing this evening. And we did receive many emails, so of course, we're not going to get in depth on the topic because it was not agendized. But Director Miller, if you could just comment on possible next steps. Welcome.
Hi, uh Director Miller, Public Works. Uh so as far as AB forty-three, uh we're actually reconvening our traffic committee, which hasn't been around for the last couple of years. And so we're planning on meeting internally in the next few weeks on that. And the next outreach step, we're talking about going to BPAC probably in the October meeting to do a presentation on AB forty-three. Just kind of what what's going on with it. And then as far as, uh I know one of the colors mentioned it, but as part of this internal uh traffic committee meeting, we're going to talk about priorities in the city and which streets we want to lower speed limits. And also another con- another thing that we're doing is we're about to enter into a contract to update our speed surveys. So some of our speed surveys are out of date, and in order to do enforcement, we have to have the speed surveys updated. So we're doing speed surveys in the entire city, so they're all on the same timeline. And so we need to have those in order to even talk about lowering speed limits.
And so it you said it would come to the BPAC, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee?
Yes.
And that is open to anybody. You don't have to be a committee member, and you can find out when the meeting is by going to the website and signing up for updates. Is that correct?
Yes, and it's usually the first Wednesday of
The month.
of the month, every other month. So October would be the one we're we're going to shoot for.
Great. Thank you, Director Miller. Thank you. Okay, with that, we've closed public comment. We'll go on to our next agenda item, City Manager and Council Member Reports. I'll turn to City Manager Littlewich.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. I just have a couple of announcements tonight. First, I want to start by welcoming. I'm very happy to announce we have two department directors that we've added to our team that um we have in the audience, Paul Navazio. Little wave, Paul. Um Paul has an incredible background in finance and city administration. We're really lucky to have him. And then Marissa Sanchez is actually online, but um she's also been named our HR Director. And I'm very excited to work with both of them. They're amazing additions to our team. Uh just a couple of reminders, we have Farmer's Market every Thursday night at five thirty, um Fourth Street between A and Lutens. And on Friday, August eleventh, we've got both of our uh second Friday. One is the Friday Night Art Walk and then Dining Under the Lights from six to ten between Fourth and B. I also wanted to mention that we do have a community survey out right now for the Police Advisory and Accountability Committee. Um both a community survey and an application for those residents who are interested in applying to um be considered to participate as members of that committee. Uh the website for that is cityofsanarafal.org/policinginsanrafel. You can find both the community survey, which is really short, just a couple of minutes to answer some questions as we're co-creating what this committee is focused on once uh we get those individuals selected and convene the committee. Also, I wanted to mention that Canal Alliance and the Marin Small Business Development Center are having their next online workshop, which is about how to start and grow your business. Those are starting up on August the first. It's a ten-session program taught all in Spanish on Tuesdays and Thursdays from six to nine. You can get more information. There's a flyer and an application at MarinSBDC.org/events/CLASE and the number two. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention that there's no regular City Council meeting on the seventh of August. And so the next regular City Council meeting will be held on August the twenty-first.
Thank you. And if someone didn't get that email address or uh web address, they can also go to Marin Small Business Development Commission, Marin C D C V.
SBDC.
Thank you, and it'll be there as well. Fantastic. I'll now turn to my colleagues to report out on meetings they've attended. I'll start with uh Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh I have three meetings I attended. One was a actually a tour of the Cedars uh Textile Arts Center uh at the end of Fifth in San Rafael. This is a this is a wonderful place where individuals with developmental disabilities are able to thrive. We got to see folks uh gardening, weaving on looms, um working various roles in the kitchen and dining area, painting. But I was most struck by the joy on uh everyone's face as we went through. Uh Mayor Kate and I were able to take that tour together. Uh proud to have Cedars in our community. It was founded in nineteen nineteen, so it just celebrated its hundredth year. And I'm just really grateful that they're a part of our community and looking forward to working together to see how we can better support that organization. On uh Thursday, June twenty-ninth, I had the opportunity to throw the first pitch at the San Rafael Pacifics game. I I cut the uh outside corner. Glad I made it. Uh and then on Wednesday, July twelfth, I was at the ribbon coating cutting for the Sun Valley Playground, which took uh over a year uh to get finally uh over the line, attended by many staff, including City Manager Lovovich, Mayor Kate. Uh Director Kufa made an appearance, Assistant Director Craig Veramey, Director April Miller, and then the Chair of the Park and Recreation Commission, Ariel Gutierrez, as well as about a dozen staff and many community members. Uh it's a beautiful park. Um and uh that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Kurtz?
I don't have anything to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
I have three things to report. I attended the annual meeting of the Locklomen Homeowners Association. I'd like to thank Chief Um Hatfield and the crew from um Station Fifty-Five who were there and were very impressive as always. And also the um team from the O E S Office of Emergency Services. Yes. And they did they did a great job. I received several questions about the playground at the Locklomen Development and the fact that it's not open. I will be taking those to next Monday's meeting of the Oversight um Committee to um get answers for those um members of the community. I also attended the um regular board meeting of the San Marin Sanitation Agency. We um adopted the agency business plan for the year, adding action items to all of our strategic objectives. Um so that was a um a a very big day to um, you know, get down to the nitty-gritty of what we're going to do um in in the next year. Um I also attended a a wonderful lunch hosted by the San Rafael Yacht Club um with Congressman Hoffman. Um the purpose was to thank him for his uh assistance in getting the dredging funding and um to oversee the on the 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 benefit the benefits of his work. And the Congressman's comments were, as always, insightful and inspiring. But I thought the person whose comments best summed it up um were his local representative Jenny Callaway, who said simply, "It's so great to see something done." So um in addition to discussing the benefits of the dredging, that of course led us to um the Lighted Boat Parade. Um because now with the canal dredge, we'll be able to get the big uh big sailboats out um in the Lighted Boat Parade. And so we're talking about coordinating that with the yacht clubs. And also, this brought us to the Department of Public Works. Because as many people um forgot, the San Rafael Yacht Club is owned by the City of San Rafael. And there is a a big sort of reviewing platform out there that traditionally the judges for the Lighted Boat Parade and local dignitaries, the mayor, for example, would um often be out there observing the boats in the Turning Basin. Of course, that has been difficult because of the lack of dredging, but with the dredging, now the boats can be there. And the reviewing area needs some repairs that um are um being discussed, I understand, with the Department of Public Works. I explained that we had a very long uh capital improvement plan, but that um we were hopeful that there would be some um assistance that could be offered. And finally, at that same meeting, uh we were sitting there overlooking Beach Park. Um and we talked a lot about what can be done there and what kind of options there are. Um so now I I assured them that Director Hinkle would be absolutely on that um to come up with um use our best um thoughts in finding some way to productively use that um that city property for the benefit of all. That's it.
Thank you. And I'll just share uh two transit meetings. I'm your representative on the Transportation Authority of Marin. And in June, we adopted the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual budget. You can read that online on their website. I'm also the representative on SMART, the Sonoma Marin Area Rapid Transit. And during the uh Marin County Fair, they had their all-time highest ridership, uh five thousand seven hundred and eighty-five people. And but even more importantly, because that was event-driven, June of this year is twenty-one percent higher than June of twenty nineteen. So it actually has exceeded uh the the decrease that uh COVID hit or impacted and has now exceeded that. And then finally, SMART has launched a a um a program called Connect Up, and it's at Santa Rosa Airport. So if you want to take SMART and get to the airport, you can park in the SMART lot, take the train, and now there's a van that will take you from the SMART uh where you get off, the SMART station, to the airport. They're hoping that will really, and obviously, it's time to coordinate with flights. They're hoping that will uh obviously be a well-used utilized service and decrease traffic in the area. So uh thank you, as always, for uh all the meetings that you attend outside of the meetings on the dais. And I will accept public comment on either the City Manager or and City Manager and Council Member Report. So if there's any public comment on these reports, I'll look to the room first of all. Not seeing any comments. Anyone online like to comment on the the reports?
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. To comment by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. And once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I see one hand at this time.
Thank you. This is Eva Crisanti. Um I just wanted to touch base with you. A little less than a year ago, The New Yorker Magazine uh featured an article about San Rafael's quote SSA um which which I think was much closer to a a police-run internment camp, but it was the camp under the freeway um that the City of San Rafael had placed um a population, a majority Black and Latino unhoused population. And everyone who was forced into that situation um grew sicker. Um and there still hasn't been any investigation. There's been no, even no private soul searching apparently on the part of uh City Council. And it it really is a little bit disconcerting, um given that we have more abuses against unhoused people ongoing. I understand that um a Black US Marine Corps veteran was so sickened in that camp um that he ended up in ICU. And when he got out, um he was supposed to be housed, and he was put back onto the street. It's my understanding, as of last week, that he was still i- on the street in the heat. Um this is a very wealthy county, and there's no reason um to keep people in such uh conditions. Um there are a lot of prior examples in the county of of, you know, temporary shelter that was much more uh humane and healthy and didn't kill people. And literally, uh the SSA did, in fact, um kill uh one of its one of its uh uh internees. So I I ask that you you do put that on the agenda, uh some sort of request for investigation or review of how that came about and why it was allowed to go on for over a year and why the city never responded to the New Yorker uh magazine article. Thank you.
So any public comment on the Councilmember and City Manager Reports?
I see no hands raised at this time. I'll just give it a couple more seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and turn to the consent agenda. Are there any items that my colleagues like to hold from the consent agenda? Okay, not seeing any. I will open public comment. So these are items four A through four F. If you'd like to comment on these items, uh please come down. Oh, do you want to just give them? Yeah, yeah, go ahead and give them to Brenna. There you go. Okay. Okay. So this is items, the consent agenda.
This is uh for consent item F.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Col- uh Colin and Councilmembers. I'm Jeff Rhodes, Executive Director of San Rafael-Based Resilient Shore. My colleagues and I have worked on this issue for eleven years. Uh kudos to Cory and Kate for securing grants totaling one point four million dollars for shore planning. Unfortunately, risk reduction doesn't seem to motivate. Folks aren't concerned about flooding until their feet get wet. People care about reducing flood insurance premiums, increasing property values, and improving quality of life with things like parks, trails, and better access to the shore and nature. Preventing gentrification from displacing canal residents is necessary. Let's not let this lead to inaction. Major portion of the grants is committed to community engagement and building capacity in the canal neighborhood. This certainly feels right and addresses social equity objectives. Not so good is the lack of resources to engage all other stakeholders, who must be part of a successful planning uh stakeholder-driven process. The people who pay, these are the people who pay for projects. We need to face this together as a whole community. Before we start planning, we must know what success looks like and begin with the end in mind. This isn't simply conforming with grant criteria. It's about using grant resources to get where we need to go. We need a stakeholder-driven shore and watershed plan and East San Rafael Area Plan that motivate action and lead to completed projects. This plan, this is planning where everyone is brought along simultaneously and participates all the way from initial visioning to completed projects. Thank you. And I want to note that some specific recommendations are included in my written comments.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Anyone else in the chambers on the consent agenda? Not seeing anyone? Anyone online like to comment on the consent agenda?
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I see one hand at this time.
Thank you, Eva Crisanti. I just want to point out that it looks like from your staff report that you're partnering with Multicultural Center of Marin and Canal Alliance on this. Um and I'm concerned that um these two groups continue to be used as proxies um for actual residents of the canal um who work hard and pay taxes and um can't be represented uh simply by nonprofits. And I do want to point out something that that continues to be buried, um which is that uh Multicultural Center of Marin uh receives significant funding uh from probation, from the County Probation Department. In fact, in January, they received over two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars uh from the probation department um for quote "justice activities" unquote, um which include drug testing. It's unclear to me why this nonprofit is engaging in proxy work for the police or for probation. Uh but it 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 may explain um why the county's reliance on Multicultural Center of Marin for um for outreach on civilian oversight for the for the sheriff was such a failure. Um because if if the Multicultural Center of Marin is seen as a proxy of the county because it's receiving such an amount of money from probation and it's essentially beholden to the county, it's reasonable that people from the canal would not uh would not find it trustworthy and would not wish to engage with it. Um this is very much the pattern we saw with uh the failed uh civilian oversight working group uh survey and outreach. Um so I I would just caution you against assuring the public that somehow these nonprofits represent the actual laborers um and families in the in the canal. And um uh the city needs to reach out to to those communities as people, not as subjects of nonprofits. Thank you.
Anyone else like to comment on the consent agenda?
I see no further hands. I'll just give it a few more seconds.
Okay.
I see no more.
Thank you. I will close the public comment, and we'll get to our first public hearing, the Bay Point Lagoons Assessment District. I'm sorry. Oh, my gosh, I was like, already turned the page. I apologize. Um I would request a motion on this item.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved in second. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Hi.
Councilmember Hill.
Hi.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Hi.
Mayor Kate.
Hi. That motion carries four zero. Now we'll turn to the public hearing, the Bay Point Lagoons Assessment District. Hello, Mr. Wong has joined us. Welcome. There you go. Yep. There you go. Okay.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Kate and members of the City Council. My name is Thomas Wong, and I am the Senior Management Analyst in the Fire Department. Today, though, I am presenting for the Department of Public Works, where I've also been working as the interim Senior Management Analyst for the past two months. I'm joined tonight by Al Cornwall, Engineering of Work, and Director Miller. We have two public hearings today, the first of which is for the Bay Point Lagoons Assessment District. There are four purposes of today's public hearing. One, to allow any person One, to allow any person to file a written protest with the city clerk. Two, for the city council to review and if choose to, order changes to the engineer's report. Three, allow for any opportunity for the majority of assessed persons to protest against an increase in assessment. We are not proposing an increase in assessment at this public hearing, though. And four, for the city council to consider adopting a resolution confirming the assessment as is or as changed. Jumping right into the history and background for the Bay Points Lagoons Assessment District, the district was formed in 1990 to protect and enhance wildlife habitat and water quality in the lagoons. Pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, funds generated by the district support ongoing maintenance, repair, and improvements of public lighting, landscaping assets, and associated infrastructure within the district. The district is comprised of about 150 homes and the Assessment District is depicted on the map currently being displayed. In the mid 2000s, the Bay Point Lagoon HOA took over landscaping within the district. And in 2015, the HOA presented the city with two concerns. One was the odor generated by algae in the lagoon and the other was improvements to the K's pump station. Since these concerns have been raised, the city and the HOA have been working together to find proper solutions given current funds. These discussions have continued and work between the city and HOA are ongoing. The Bay Point Lagoons Assessment District supports three dedicated funds. The eradication of exotic plants fund, which protects and enhances the wildlife habitat in the lagoon and salt marsh. The environmental monitoring fund, which supports concerns over odors emitted from the lagoons in the summer months. And the K's stormwater improvement fund, which supports drainage and pumping of the lagoons. These balances remain unchanged since last year, except for the stormwater improvement fund, which saw a reduction of $5,000 in fund balance due to ongoing expenses in fiscal year 2023. The proposed assessment for FY 2324 is $131.44 per parcel. This has remained unchanged since 1996 and is the maximum allowable. Approximately 150 homes pay this assessment and several affordable housing units are exempt. All single family dwelling units are assessed equally pursuant to Proposition 13. City staff and the HOA meet regularly to discuss priorities and issues related to the district. And the HOA was provided the engineer's report for review prior to this meeting and comments have been incorporated. The city council may now conduct the public hearing and adopt the resolution ordering the levy of assessments for FY 2324, or choose not to adopt the resolution resulting in no levy of assessments for FY 2324. Thank you for your time tonight and we are now available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions, council members? Nope. Okay, not seeing any questions. I'll open public comment on this item. Anyone in the chambers? Sure, come on down.
Good evening.
Yeah, pull it down. There.
Whoa.
There you go.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Lown and I'm here as a taxpayer who has paid district assessments for the last 25 years. I support the use of these assessments as a means of preserving and protecting the Bay Point Spinnaker Lagoon complex, but I ask that these assessment funds be used in a fair and equitable way. I'm here to address just one aspect of the use of assessment funding. How much of these funds should be used to rehabilitate the K's stormwater pump station? That pump station is a municipal facility constructed well before the Assessment District was formed, and it was constructed for the purpose of managing stormwater in the East San Rafael neighborhood. It's continued to be used since then for that municipal function. I raise two points for your consideration tonight. One of simple fairness, the other of the legal limitations on using special assessments. Both points are discussed in the written comments that I've submitted to the city council. The city council has recognized in other instances the need to apportion use of special assessments according to the benefit received by those paying the assessments. Most recently, the city council did so in its April adoption of the Citywide Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I ask that you take a similar action here, specifically limiting use of assessment funds for pump station improvements to a pro rata share reflecting the benefits received by properties within the district. In other words, only reflect the costs that can be prorated to those within the district, leaving whatever costs above and beyond that to be paid by those outside the district who are also receiving a benefit. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anyone else in the chambers? Like to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone? Is there anyone online?
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I see no hands raised. Just give it a few more seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and come back. So really just a question. I think the question is really, what's the community involvement in terms of how the funds are dispersed? They have one public commenter on, on this and this is a whole assessment. Could you speak to that?
I'm going to defer to Director Miller on this one.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. As so as, as Thomas mentioned, we do meet with the HOA regularly, usually before we spend money or because we've been working with them on different aspects. As far as the, the pump station goes, so we have not discussed how much, like what they're different, like who's paying for what in regards to that. The current, the current item that we're looking at doing in the next year or two is actually updating the controls. So they're, so the flap gate is automatic. Right now, Public Works crews have to go into the water to lift the, the gate up. And so part of it, the safety issue. And so that's, our plan is to do some sort of automated controls so we can at least press a button from outside of the water. Ideally, the bigger project that we've been looking at is we would love to be able to control it from Public Works office, which is some of our other pump stations. We can just press the button from sitting at our desks. So one of the, one of the reasons why we're looking at some sort of shared cost on this item is because the gate automatically does go up and down depending on the level of the water. But in the summer months, the only reason that why we lift the gate up and down is, is due to recharging the lagoons due to smell. And that's one of the items that we talked to with the, with the HOA and Assessment District was looking at, you know, what can we do during the summer months? Otherwise, we could let it go up and down with the tides, but that would, you know, the smell would be high when the lagoon is low. So we've been recharging the, the ponds now every about two to three weeks in order to keep the smell down. And so right now, we manually do that. So we want to get controls so that we can more easily operate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I didn't hear any other questions. So are there, unless there are questions from the council, I would request a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve. Turning the page. Adopt resolution confirming the engineer's annual report for the Bay Point Lagoons Assessment District and the assessment diagram connected therewith and ordering the levy and collection of assessments for FY 202324.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second and roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries four zero. Thank you, Thomas. Looks like you're here for the next one as well, the Point San Pedro Road Median Landscaping Assessment District.
Okay, let's do another.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Mayor Kate and members of the city council. My name is Thomas Wong, Senior Management Analyst, and I am again joined by Al Cornwell, Engineer of Work and Director Miller. This public hearing is for the Point San Pedro Medians Assessment District, and I apologize in advance if this is repetitive, but for completeness, we'll go over some of the same items as the prior presentation. There are four purposes of today's public hearing. One, to allow any person to file a written protest with the city clerk. Secondly, for the city council to review and if choose to, order changes to the engineer's report. Three, allow for an opportunity for the majority of assessed persons to protest against an increase in assessment, and in this case, we are proposing an increase in assessment. And four, for the city council to consider adopting a resolution confirming the assessment as is or as changed. The Point San Pedro Medians Assessment District was formed in 2011 to repair and maintain 29 medians along Point San Pedro Road from San Rafael High School to Biscayne Drive. The medians weave in and out of San Rafael and County right of way, and both San Rafael and County residents along the route are included in the district. Here you can see the extents of the district in red and the medians along Point San Pedro Road in blue. The district assesses two fees. The first fee services the annual debt service incurred when the district raised $1.75 million in bonds in 2013 to pay for the initial reconstruction of the 29 medians. Each property owner within the district was given the option to pay their full share of their portion of the debt service upfront or be assessed annually. The majority of properties chose the annual payment method, and this year's proposed assessment for debt service is $58.70 per EBU. An EBU is an equivalent benefit unit, method of assessment apportionment, which establishes a basic unit of benefit and then calculates the benefit derived by each assessed parcel as a multiple or a fraction of a basic unit. Details for how the EBU applied to other land uses such as apartments and businesses within this district is outlined in the engineer's report. Single family dwellings are assessed one EBU for reference. The operation and maintenance portion of the assessment helps maintain and operate the medians. All properties within the district are assessed this amount. This year's proposed assessment is $55.60. The total cost for most single family dwellings that did not prepay their debt is $114.30, which represents an annual increase of 5.7%, which is calculated using the San Francisco-Oakland Urban Consumer Price Index. Here is the proposed operation maintenance budget for FY 24. A majority of the costs are associated with the landscape contractor and utility bills. The city and specifically city park staff manage the maintenance and operation of the medians. City staff work closely with the Point San Pedro Road Coalition Committee to determine priorities and discuss improvements. I want to thank those volunteers as well as our parks workers for the time and effort they put in to ensuring the medians stay well maintained. The city council may now conduct the public hearing and adopt the resolution ordering the levy of assessments for FY 2324, or may choose to not adopt the resolution resulting in no levy of assessments for FY 2324. Thank you again for your time tonight and we will now be ready for questions.
Thank you, Thomas. Any questions? Not seeing any. I'll open this item up to public comment.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Kevin Hagerty and I'm on the Board of Directors of the Point San Pedro Road Coalition. Since the Assessment District was formed in 2011, the Coalition has been working closely with city staff in both the yearly maintenance of the, monitoring the maintenance of medians, and also on an annual basis in reviewing the engineer's report and budget and proposal for rate increases or assessment fee increases. And I'm happy to say that we're, we heavily support what the city is recommending. I also wanted to acknowledge the great assistance of Public Works Director April Miller, Thomas Wong, and Aaron Tubbs, who we work very closely with, making sure that the work is done correctly. So we would urge you to support the measure.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for your work on this. Anyone else in the chambers? Not seeing anyone? Is there anyone online who would like to comment on this item?
If you'd like to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If you'd like to comment via phone, please press star nine. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. I see no hands at this time. Just give it a couple more seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and I do want to extend kudos. Thank you, Al, for all of your help as well as DPW and especially the Coalition. I have to say, the medians look really beautiful right now. Every, many other places, there's, the weeds are taking over a little bit, but you can really see the benefit of an assessment district for folks that were willing to make that commitment to their, to their neighborhood. So not seeing any questions, I will turn to Councilmember Bushy.
Aye. I move that we adopt a resolution confirming the engineer's annual levy report for the Point San Pedro Road Median Landscaping District and the assessment diagram connected therewith and ordering the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2023 and 2024.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries four zero. Thank you. Thank you very much, Thomas. Thank you. Next item on our agenda this evening is the San Rafael Police Department AB 481 Military Equipment Annual Report and Renewal of Military Equipment Use Policy. I see Chief Spiller has joined us. Welcome, chief.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the city council. Thank you for having me this evening. So the item, the next item before you tonight is the San Rafael Police Department's use of military equipment and our annual reporting pursuant to Assembly Bill 481, which is now codified in 7070, 7071, and 7072 of the government code. A little background on Assembly Bill 481. Assembly Bill 481 was authored by Assembly Member David Chu from San Francisco to address the funding, acquisition, and use of military equipment. The intention or the spirit of the legislation was to increase transparency and oversight for the use of military equipment by local law enforcement agencies. As you will likely recall, in May of last year, the San Rafael City Council approved the military equipment policy, which is now part of our Comprehensive Policy Manual in Section 706, as well as the Municipal Code 2.52, which covers the police department's use of military equipment. Tonight's presentation serves as our first annual report on this topic. So military equipment, as defined in the legislation, is classified in 15 specific categories. Several of these categories we possess equipment, many of these categories we do not. So for example, category number one, unmanned or remotely piloted or operated ground vehicles, tactical robots, as an, as an example. Category two, armored rescue vehicles. We are in joint possession with the Nevada Police Department of a Ford Transit style van, which is up armored and it's utilized by both organizations as a rescue vehicle. Category number five, command and control vehicles. We actually have a pull behind trailer, which we procured from grant money from the Office of Traffic Safety. It's typically used as a DUI trailer or, or in some cases, a command post. Category number seven are battering rams or breaching tools. Category number 10, specialized firearms, like patrol rifles. Category 12 are diversionary devices or noise flash devices. And finally, number category 14 are kinetic energy projectiles or less lethal projectiles like beanbag rounds, for example. So of the 15 categories, those are the categories that the San Rafael Police Department is currently utilizing as enumerated on our military equipment list, which is included in your report. Assembly Bill 481 requires an annual report to the city council, which is my presentation this evening. The report includes six main topic areas. The first, a summary of how the equipment's used. Number two, a summary of any potential complaints from the community. Number three, the results of any internal audits or discovered violations of the, of policy as it relates to this equipment. Number three, costs associated of this equipment. Number four, quantity of each military equipment as defined. And then finally, any military equipment that the law enforcement agency intends to procure. Again, this is our first annual reporting. As it relates to the first element under equipment usage, in the categories of equipment that the San Rafael Police Department possesses, categories one, seven, 10, and 12, these are robots, breaching tools, patrol rifles, diversionary devices, as I described. Those were only utilized this past year in department training environments. The command trailer, which is captured in category five, was used one time this last year and it was for a DUI checkpoint. No other command posts in terms of the utilization of that category five equipment. The jointly owned and operated armored rescue vehicle, which is used by San Rafael and Nevada Police Departments, there were three deployments of that vehicle, one of which was in the city of San Rafael when the vehicle was used to deliver crisis negotiators to a subject who was holding himself at bay with a knife in the wake of a, of a call on the north end of town. the north end of town. There is a typo, if I could beg the council's pardon, in the staff report under category two, there's a cut-and-paste typo indicating that the armored vehicle, category two, was only used in training. It actually captures the three deployments, but it also says that it was only used in training. So we'll correct that in the draft report. And then last but not le, last but not least, the less lethal impact devices under category 14. There were three deployments of those beanbag type rounds in incidents where police personnel were confronted with uncooperative suspects, a violent sexual assault suspect, and a suspect who had threatened customers with a knife at a local restaurant. As far pursuant to required reporting, the San Rafael Police Department has received no complaints from the community in regards to our military equipment. Additionally, an internal review revealed no violations of policy or misuse of the equipment as codified in our policy. The equipment inventory, that, of equipment that we possess has not changed since the original reporting. And as outlined in the report, while we don't intend to add any equipment to our inventory, we do intend to replace aging rifles. If the council considers adopting the resolution and renewing the ordinance, we intend to procure 10 patrol rifles to start to phase decades-old patrol rifles to upgrade that equipment, and we intend to de-inventory the old equipment and replace eight former precision or sniper rifles with two, excuse me, two new rifles. This is approximately a $12,000 expenditure for both of those items. The reason the police department needs this equipment, the why, which often comes up, the San Rafael Police Department maintains an inventory of select items as defined or codified in Assembly Bill 481. These select items are in the police department's inventory and are authorized only by department policy for the safe and peaceful resolution to situations that involve lack of suspect compliance or active suspect resistance. In many cases, this equipment, including the armored rescue vehicle as an example, allows us to increase the time to resolve an incident. It allows us to increase distance between us and a potential violent individual, and it allows for de-escalation techniques. As it relates to community outreach and the work we've done to, to communicate the policy and our intentions with the community, the department's military equipment policy has been posted on our website, and it is maintained in the transparency tab of the police department's website. On April 26th of this year, the police department facilitated a virtual town hall style meeting to inform the public about the department's inventory and use of military-style equipment. There was no public comment received in the virtual meeting, nor were there any questions directed to staff. The San Rafael Police Department maintains the feedback tab under our transparency portal where the public can share complaints, concerns, or any comments, and that's available throughout the year on the police department's website. The San Rafael Police Department did not receive any complaints via that website this past year, however, we did receive one comment from a community member appreciating the ability to deliver safety and security to the community by use of these special tools. So the recommendation before you this evening, staff recommends council adopt the resolution renewing the ordinance and approving the San Rafael Police Department's Military Equipment Use Policy in Section 706 and to accept this report.
Thank you, Chief. I'll see if there are any questions. Councilmember Hill, go ahead.
I thank you, Chief, for your report. You used the word de-inventory. Can you explain what de-inventory means?
So, we're going to get rid of the rifles. So we would lawfully remove them from the system, and they would be destroyed. There are some cases, depending on the value, they could be sold and reused, but we are not interested in having those weapons on the street, so they would be destroyed through our evidence technician. We basically make the guns not functional, and then they're melted down.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that was my question, being that we participated in the gun buyback last year, so I would just want to ensure they're destroyed and not sold to another agency or actually removed from our world. Thank you. I did have a question. So the report we're submitting to the community, does it also get submitted to any state agency, being that this was a state legislation that came through?
Yeah, it doesn't, actually. The, the, the state legislation really is intended to create transparency for local law enforcement. So all municipalities and sheriff's offices required to report the use of military equipment as defined through 481.
And then the report exists on the website?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I will turn to the community for any public input on this item. First of all, looking at the chambers.
So I would just like to remind everybody that two officers under Spiller's supervision currently are facing felony charges from the Marin County District Attorney's Office. And as we heard earlier tonight, body cam, officers have high latitude to turn it off and on. And if, if there had not been body cam, when those two officers beat, beat up that gentleman in the canal, they wouldn't have been caught. I mean, those are two felons, potential felons, you know, innocent until proven guilty and all that. But I watched the video, I made up my mind, and those people can get away, right? And so what is this, when you get in this military equipment, that makes all the officers think of themselves as military personnel, and people that are inclined to use violence. And the fact is, and it's scary to think, that, you know, what kind of behavior happens when the body cameras are off? And how does that culture, how is that aggravated by having military equipment? Because if you even look, you know, 70 years ago, 80 years ago, we didn't have that kind of mentality in law enforcement, right? There wasn't, there weren't tanks patrolling the streets. So I would just, I would recommend that we demilitarize all of our police departments.
Thank you for your comments. And I'll remind, if you're not required, but to state your name and where in San Rafael you live, if you want to share. Anyone else in the chambers? Not seen anyone? Anyone online? Oh, did you want to come up, sir?
So, thank you, Robbie Paulson. And it's $10,000 for rifle bullets through the military, which is a lot of bullets. That in the Holy Torres, as anybody with stone in their hands or a metal object is presumed guilty if there is a body beneath them for the moment to investigate them. So I agree, demilitarize the police's interactions, especially with the houseless, the most vulnerable of the people. And that people who have been traumatized by living underneath freeways for quite a long time, eventually with the fence surrounding the entire one and a private security agency in front of it. That many people have been housed, but there remains people who are not. From this community, Miwok Indians can go to Nevada to camp compassion and call it camp integrity here, that it's along a waterfront, close to the bus station. That to care about the least of us without any violence intended in our heart or in what we carry is the best way to deal with each other. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the chambers? Okay, not seen anyone? Is there anyone virtually who would like to comment on? Oh, sorry, sir. The microphone up to make it more comfortable for you. There you go.
I would like to correct the statement by my friend, Mr. Paulson. Robbie stated that up until eight years ago, that there wasn't military equipment in our neighborhoods. How many? Eighty or eight?
Eight.
Oh, excuse me. Okay. My apologies. I was gonna remind you all that there have been tanks and batterams in black neighborhoods for decades, decades upon decades, but, excuse me, I thought you said eight.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Anyone else? Not seen anyone in the chambers? Now I'll look to the deputy city clerk.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. I do see a couple hands at this time.
This is John Reynolds. I live in the canal right now, I'm in Maui with my six sister, but I'm concerned about this. We did say yes to having military equipment in the past. Do we really need to have military equipment to stop crime where people are resisting or not obeying the police? I understand the rationale, perhaps, but how many instances have we used military equipment? Do we really need to use it? Are there other alternatives? That's the question. Of course, deconstructing rifles and anything we get rid of, of course, do that, of course. But it's a matter of mentality. The Oversight Committee, advocacy and oversight, administrative oversight, we're putting forward is, and it needs to have some teeth and to help law enforcement leaders and city and county work to change mentality from a warrior mentality and a race-targeting mentality to a protect and serve mentality. That's where we, it's a mentality issue. And having that equipment around, it's going to be used at some point, several instances where it's been used, but are there alternatives? Mentality, if you're going to do it, you need to be disciplined in the use, and you have to get rid of the items when you're going to decommission them, destroy them totally. That's important. Even the vehicles should be destroyed if we're not going to use them. To what extent that they're really needed? That's the question. People have said that from the, from the marginal community and from other people. The question is, do we use these military equipment?
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Erica Santi, I would like to recognize the spirit of Mr. Paulson's comments and the, the effort to correct it. I do want to point out that military equipment has been used by the police on American populations, including American white populations for, for, for a very long time. Of course, the US military was responsible for an obscene amount of the slaughter of indigenous people in this country. And of course, the, the Texas Rangers lynched an unfathomable number of Latinos in, in Texas. And of course, San Francisco Police conducted absolutely bloody murderous raids against people in Chinatown in San Francisco, even as those people in Chinatown had been forced out of camps all over the West Coast and other parts of the West. And I would also add that some, some prominent people, the McGlashans in, in Marin County are the descendants of the patriarch of the McGlashan family, which came up with the truckie method, which was a way of starving out Chinese labors after their labor was no longer considered useful. And I would also say that we are almost at the 100-year mark of the Great Strike of 1934, where workers on the Embarcadero were tear-gassed, and Harry Bridges fought back very hard. He, he, he won because he integrated the Union. He made that effort to racially integrate the Union. I do want to recognize that the sheriff does use military equipment in Marin City. He has no hesitation about doing that. He's been doing that for years. So that is just this, this military equipment.
Thank you for your comments. Go ahead.
This is Salama Locke from San Rafael. Hello, Chief Spiller. I would like to ask, I appreciate all the historical comments that have been presented prior to my speaking. I regret I was not at the April meeting to hear more about the actual equipment. And so I have a question for, that I would like for clarification, to, to address for clarification of the use that the report indicates that they were used. And that was the category 14, says less-than-lethal rifle was used. I'd like to know, what does that really mean? Is that rubber pellets, or what is less-than-lethal from a shotgun? And number two, category 10, the Colt AR-15, those we've been hearing a lot about, that citizens in various other places have been using the AR-15, which is an assault weapon with its own sole purpose of killing whoever is on the end of the, you know, the recipient of those bullets. So if you could just clarify the use of the category 10 and the category 14 types that were listed in the examples of usage for 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Salama.
I see no other hands raised. I'll just give it a couple more seconds. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment. So we received comment, but we also received two specific questions from Salama, both category 14 and category 10, I'm sure. Yeah.
Yes, so the less lethal question under category 14, so the, our department uses both the beanbag rounds, which are typically delivered through a Remington 870, it's a shotgun, but we would describe it as a less lethal delivery system because we don't utilize shotguns as shotguns any longer. They're all distinctively marked stocks, and they're utilized for a less lethal delivery system. So that would typically be a beanbag round. We also utilize a 40-millimeter soft projectile round, which can be utilized as well as a less lethal option. The second question was Colt rifles. All of our members are assigned and carry or lock in their vehicle patrol service rifle, and those are used in special circumstances, otherwise they stay locked in the car. So that's the purpose. In addition to the patrol rifle, we do utilize rifles for the SWAT team, Special Weapons and Tactics Team as well.
Thank you. If there's any other questions from the council, yes, Councilmember Hill?
Just to follow up on Salama's question, she, she mentioned AR-15. Do we have AR-15s in our inventory?
If you don't mind, I'm going to look at our equipment list. It's been a little while since I've used some of this equipment. The M4s are the, the rifles that are currently being utilized by the SWAT team, and I believe So the patrol rifles are a combination of Colt and Olympic arms. The SWAT rifles, as I mentioned, are M4 semi-automatic rifles. Those are Colt rifles as well. And the precision rifles that the SWAT precision rifle operators utilize are Knights Armament weapons.
So what I'm hearing is that we, we do not have AR-15s in our inventory?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any other questions, I would entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we adopt the resolution renew, renewing the ordinance approving the San Rafael Police Department Military Equipment Use Policy 706.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries four zero. Thank you very much, Chief, for that update. We appreciate it. The next agenda item is ordinance regulating camping on public property. This is a second hearing on the ordinance that we heard. I guess I'm probably starting your staff report. Director Hessel, let you say what it is. So welcome. Welcome, Sergeant Hammer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, all of the members of the public interested in this topic. We're very grateful for your participation as well. We are going to be talking about the ordinance that we presented last week, a proposed ordinance to regulate the time, place, and manner by which persons experiencing homelessness in the city can camp on public property. This is the second reading of that proposed ordinance. The last week, we went into a great deal about the ordinance, and tonight we're here to present staff's proposed implementation strategy. And if the, that is, if the ordinance is adopted tonight. We've received many comments from the community and consulted our nonprofit service partners. Over this last week, we're immensely grateful for those comments. And we are really looking for how we can work together with the community on an incremental approach to support individuals as they leave, particularly the Mahone Creek Path, that is the subject of the most interest in regards to this at the moment. I'm joined here by Lieutenant Huber from the San Rafael Police Department, who has been really instrumental in creating this ordinance. And I'm going to turn it over to, to him for a moment to speak about the strategy of deconcentration.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of council. My name is Carl Huber. I'm a lieutenant with the Police Department and it's an honor to speak before you tonight. I wanted to touch briefly on the purpose for this ordinance. It is truly a public safety ordinance. I know I mentioned in the last meeting some examples from the Albert Park encampment, some of the challenges that we faced. We're seeing similar issues at the Mahone Path encampment. I'm sure you're aware that we had a pretty significant incident last Friday involving a fire and a violent assault. We're trying to prevent those types of incidents that seem to be prevalent in some of our larger encampments. One of the other examples that I can, I can give to you that is evidence of this type of challenges. I looked at calls for service for a retailer that's positioned adjacent to the camp in the encampment on Mahone Path. And in the last four months, they've seen a three times increase in calls for service alone at their, their place of business as opposed to the previous four months. We've received complaints about, from another business about the deposit of hazardous waste, human waste on, on the local business in their yard and on their building. And there are concerns about the, the health and safety of their patrons as they're faced with these challenges. And as you're also aware, that we've also had multiple complaints of open air drug use and drug trafficking and, and drug trafficking arrests as well in the encampment.
Uh, thank you. I wanted to address a little bit about how we plan to enforce this ordinance, which has been a subject of a great deal of interest by the community. We really intend to use our collaborations in the community and implement this with a great deal of compassion and considering the safety of the entire community, very much including the individuals who are currently camping at the Mahone Path. So if the ordinance passes, the first legal date for implementation could be August 16th, which is 30 days from tonight. However, that does not mean that it is fully executed on that day. The city's primary concern is going to be the Mahone Creek Path encampment, where we have about 30 to 35 campsites currently. Between the time in which this meeting occurs and the time in which we implement the ordinance, we would begin right away with an education program for the homeless community involving all of our services providers. We would be, we would be providing notice to the individuals who are camping there about the new rules and really trying to take the type of approach that has been successful for us at the service support area and at Albert Park, when we managed to gain voluntary compliance with our community that was camping there. So some of the options for gaining voluntary compliance that we're looking at include offering non-monetary incentives for individuals who would be willing to relocate voluntarily prior to doing any enforcement action. And so some of these could involve things like cell phones, Safeway gift cards. I think the important thing, though, is there is not a specific set of incentives that we've decided on because we intend to consult with individuals experiencing homelessness at the path and with the different service providers that we work with. We intend to offer a pop-up weekly service support at the path to support connectivity between service providers and the individuals experiencing homelessness. By no means are all the individuals camping there involved currently with case management. And there is a great deal of potential for outreach. And at this time of change, and as the reality of needing to leave that space becomes apparent to people, certain programs like case management may become much more attractive. We also know that these new restrictions will ultimately require some individuals, the majority of individuals at that path to be relocated. So we will need to take time and work collaboratively with each person, understand their individual circumstances, and work with service providers to open up those conversations. There are programs that we may work with based on past experience with Albert Park, including Jonathan's Place, The Shelter, Casa Buena, or Center Point, the recovery inpatient program, that again, become much more interesting to individuals at a time when change is imminent. So our goal will be to reduce the number of individuals camping there incrementally with enforcement actions being possible, but not necessarily taken from August 16th onward. We do need to state, though, if the encampment does grow or intensify over that time period, we may not be able to use our preferred approach and have to use a more enforcement-oriented approach. And I think with that, we'll open up for the council.
Thank you. And we had quite a robust discussion on it at our last meeting. And I know we might have other questions, but I just had one to start off of. Was, many municipalities are struggling with similar issues. And I understand that daytime camping bans, Portland has looked at that. I know there are other cities. Was that something that was considered? And if not, could you share why that was not a tool that we would consider?
So, yes, it was considered. We decided to go with this direction instead. There are a few places that have just recently implemented this. We are concerned about what the unintended consequences of such an action would be. I've happened to recently be up in Sonoma County where they have implemented this type of a program. And I noticed that there actually was really quite a lot of compliance with that program. You did not see the tents along the Joe Redota path that you had seen in the past. We do want to see, though, what other experiences of those communities are. Does that push more individuals into the downtown area, for example, during the day? And what kind of consequences it might have for more vulnerable homeless individuals before we really consider going that route?
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Kurtz?
Thank you for the update and the additional detail around the implementation after the introduction of the ordinance from last week. This is really helpful to understand these parts of the puzzle. I was wondering if you could just provide a little bit more detail on the service providers in terms of who you're working with and what you're working with. And that's sort of a related question is, how, because we already have that model today, how is it going to be different between now and as we're implementing this ordinance?
Yes, definitely. And it's a great opportunity for me to, to speak about some of the great service partnerships, which include St. Vincent de Paul Society, the Downtown Streets Team, the Ritter Center, and all of our providers of shelter, including Homeward Bound and the Center for Domestic Peace, and probably many other providers that are working with us. Certainly, the Marin County Health and Human Services has been very key. We've consulted with all of the groups collectively through the Marin Alliance to Solve Homelessness that meets weekly and includes all of the different providers. Additionally, I've had many offline conversations with the leaders of most of those agencies that I just mentioned that have been extremely helpful. These collaborations have been very successful in the past. We are doing that now, as you say. I think that the really big thing that is different is that there is an imminent change occurring at the path. Our experience with Albert Park, for example, really was that once the relocation of individuals was imminent, that many people did leave voluntarily as that day approached. Once we got to the day itself, the camp was at a fraction of the size it had been, and it allowed our Police Department and our Public Works team to do their really very phenomenal work with gaining voluntary compliance with the remaining individuals. We were able to complete that with the help of service providers and without any arrests or citations being issued, which was something that I was very pleased with.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Bushy.
I believe school starts on August 23rd. And that path is, well, at least was used by students going to Davidson. Are you incorporating that in your timeline at all?
Yeah, thank you for that. I think that we are imagining that, trying to return the path to a situation as soon as possible where parents would be more comfortable having their students go to school and that. I feel very strongly about that. Ultimately, we do need to remember that with the implementation of this ordinance, there always, not always, but there, in the post-implementation, will continue to be camping possible at the Mahone Creek Path just at a lower intensity than what we're currently experiencing. I think that there's a lot of aspects about this timetable. That is something we're considering. We do know that enforcement is a piece of the puzzle and trying to have a certain date that we develop with the community and understanding the circumstances is something that is really going to help us make those incentives work. That being said, we don't have a specific date right now that we've established.
But you're thinking about this date and will be aware of it and perhaps deploying resources on those days and times that students would likely be around.
Yes.
Yeah, and Councilmember Bushy, I just have a few more comments to add to that. So one of our considerations with regard to time is that clearing of campsites can often result in legal challenges filed against the city. And so we, we can, you know, expect or anticipate that a filing may be made against the city in that timeframe. And that can often delay the process by a few weeks by the time we work through that court process and get a court's ruling. So we're building that into kind of our assumptions, but that would push us, you know, likely into September if we are working off an August 16th date. But like Director, Assistant Director has already explained, our hope is that we don't have to get to that point and that we're going to work with the individuals so that we can get voluntary compliance before, you know, in that timeframe.
But overall, you will be thinking about the dates of the students will be, will be coming back. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you for the report. My question, it's building on a question that I'd asked last time about inventory and availability of permanent supportive housing and shelter beds. I recall that we did do in the last meeting an inventory of what is available around the county. On the regular, as folks either move from permanent supportive housing into other housing stock, how regularly do we get more available vouchers for folks to be able to access?
So, thank you for that. It is not really a regular process. There has been times where there is a great number of vouchers and it seems like everyone is getting housed and it's fantastic. Right now, we are not in that type of a period and we don't expect for a large voucher release to be occurring until near the end of this calendar year. Additionally, I would note that permanent supportive housing will be coming online in the county. The Elysio Project in Larkspur, and the anticipated date of that is October. There are a few people currently camping at the Mahone Path who are on the list for that and are very likely to move in there. Additionally, as others that may be in shelters like Jonathan's Place move in there, there will be openings at Jonathan's Place, and that will create a certain new capacity in the shelter system that also will offer alternatives. But we don't expect that to be happening until October from the recent projections.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just had one more follow-up question, something you had said about case management, that not all the folks there are under case management. And one thing we heard from the directors of our nonprofits was how key case management is to get folks into housing, to get on the voucher path and to get the support services. So my question to you is, is this something, can we work with them? Or how are we going to really have the case managers step up their game over the next couple of weeks, number one? And number two, if you could just speak to our safe specialized assistance for everyone and how is that a piece? Because we are the only jurisdiction in Marin County that has a safe program. Marin County has one itself, but we're the only city in town. So we actually already have a tool that no other city. Could you talk about how that will manifest or how that support will play out?
Definitely. So first, on case management, we have case managers doing a phenomenal job. The city's contract with St. Vincent de Paul, as I mentioned last time, is something we're very proud of and something that has been successful in housing the majority of individuals that are in the program. Generally, we have, when we have groups of folks that are not involved in case management, there is a process of outreach, which is a different skill set actually than case management and usually conducted by different staff within those agencies by which they go and deliver on their various small promises in order to gain the trust of individuals toward working together on case management goals like housing readiness, gaining an ID, cleaning up credit, finding qualification documents for various programs, the things that can stop people from finding housing. So there is a lot of outreach that goes on at the path right now. And as I said before, I do think that the fact of a change occurring on the ground and the reality of that is something that makes the outreach uniquely effective and makes it something much more interesting to people who now are facing the prospect of needing that resource more. In regards to our SAFE team, so the SAFE team has been at the path proactively and because it has been called because of individuals being in crisis many times. And I should note that SAFE stands for Specialized Assistance for Everyone. It's the city's Alternative Response Program by which certain calls of people in crisis that would normally be handled by the police are instead held by trained mental health workers. We have had them down there at the path most days, offering different resources, learning about who the individual support system is. And as we get closer to this, assuming that if the council decides to adopt the proposed ordinance, I believe that that will only intensify. There is the possibility of individuals potentially going into crisis at the prospect of being relocated. If that occurs, SAFE will be an asset and resource that we've never had for this type of a closure activity before. And I'm immensely grateful that we will have that. We'll see how that plays out, but I think it will be something that is very worth the investment the city has made.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. I don't see any other questions. There might be some that arise. So we'll open up the So, we'll open up the public comment on this item. And as always, you're invited, but not required, to state your name and where in San Rafael that you live. And you can pull that microphone down. There you go.
It's a trick question. Because of course, if somebody is houseless, and that Mr. Hassan, Mr. Huber is what the Israelites still are, no temple rebuilt, exactly according to some, that now we're going to bow down to, this is the blue and the red. Very hot day today, and the people contributing to it are not the poorest. They are, in fact, the richest amongst us. The ones who are in cars and planes and vacations and big, air-conditioned houses. Thank you for them too, on a day like today. So, to take a group and to say that this follows California Constitution, Article 11, Section 7, which says the city is allowed to pass any law that does not contradict something called the general law. What is the general law? If a person does not have a legal place to lay their head, under the freeway was an atrocity not committed by the people that were there only, okay? What happens now is not just going to be up to this council's vote. Vote, no. No taking of a people and turning them into slaves again. No services with ropes attached, or handcuffs, or guns, or $10,000 worth of bullets, chief. So, not presumed guilty, presumed innocent, all of us, including status criminals, but especially the houseless.
You can wrap up. Thank you.
Jeff Jacob Chase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mayor Kate.
Mr. Patterson?
So, this ordinance will kill people. It's going to, it will, if you pass it and it's enforced as it's written. Just imagine right now, there's seniors with congestive heart failure in the blazing heat. And you're going to force seniors, people who rely on their, the people that they're living with in close proximity for caregiving, to move, to walk, to pick up water and groceries. And you're going to deprive them of all that aid, right? You're going to have, you're going to have, there's people who can barely walk in tents, who've been turned down by all the service, kicked out of Jonathan's Place, lying in tents, barely able to walk. And you're going to make them 200 feet away from everybody else. That's dangerous, and you're responsible. And the fact that there's nothing in the ordinance talking about, oh, how do we make sure people are safe? You know, that's, that's, doesn't make any sense. Doesn't make any sense. And frankly, I think that it kind of proves the point about homelessness is that really, people, people, I'm afraid to say that our authority figures want homelessness. You want to be able to have people at the bottom who are tormented. That way, everybody else toe the line. There's no rational reason why you would be putting people's lives in jeopardy except to inflict pain so everybody else knows to behave a certain way, to stay out of, if you don't like it, get out of our community. That's what you're just saying, and you're trying to make a show for us, and you try and use, it's almost like indulgences from 500 years ago. You say, oh, this is all okay because we paid some service providers to provide a small amount of services to a small number of people. This, this is unconscionable.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, anyone else like to speak in the chamber? Yeah, come on down.
Good evening. My name is Gregory Taylor. And I've been in Marin County for a good 30 years now. I haven't spoken in this room. Last time was in front of Mayor Boro, good old Al Boro. It was about 25 years ago. I told him, we don't need public housing for cops. They make enough money. Let them get their own housing. I remember that. I only got a minute or so, so I just want to say, well, first, I want to ask you a question. What does Mill Valley do for the homeless? What does Tiburon do for the homeless? What does Sausalito do for the homeless? Nothing compared to what San Rafael does for the homeless. I am so proud of this city and what they do for the homeless. If you come here with nothing, no matter what your situation is, this is the best place you could ever come. There's more services than you're ever going to find anywhere else. And with that said, as a community here in San Rafael, we're going to have a black mark on our record forever and ever. And I'm talking about the horrible conditions that were experienced by so many underneath that 101 Overpass for many, many months. I don't know how we can ever make amends. We should always try to strive to make sure that never happens again because that is unconscionable. And that really, that really hurt my soul when I saw people living like that. I used to ride my bike down from Nevada, and I'd stop in San Rafael and say, does anybody want to ride down to Sausalito? At least we've got fresh air at our homeless camp. And I never did get anyone to come with me, and I noticed how severe that situation was. So, I'm glad I had a chance to speak on that. I gave a talk not too many years ago where I suggested we use Falkirk Mansion as a homeless shelter. So, that's the type of thinking outside of the box I think it's time for us to embrace. I would say no on this initiative because you're not giving anything. It has to be give and take, not just take, take, take. Thank you.
Thank you, Gregory. Okay, anyone else in the chambers?
Good evening, Mayor Kate and council members. I'm Margaret Trezavant, and I'm on the board of Ritter Center. I've spent most of my career working in homeless programs, mostly in San Francisco, the Department of Public Health. I have some concerns about the unintended consequences that you were talking about, Chris, that you mentioned that you would be sending, the week before, you'd be sending in the team to, you know, tell people what services were available. But we know at Ritter that we do that all the time. And it takes, you know, it takes more than a week to just say, hey, here's this service, and then the next thing you know, these people have disappeared, and they're not going to be getting their services. We have a mobile van that, you know, goes to encampments and other places for that very reason, to build relationships and get people to access our services. In terms of safety, are you really going to make it safer? Just, you know, you're still going to get calls, you know? Yet, we're talking about people that have a very unstable living situation and mental health problems, physical problems, drug abuse problems. But what you're doing by making them leave these sites is you're making it harder for us to find them and work with them. And I'm just concerned that, you know, you're also talking about, you know, you'll take their things away if they're not using them to, you know, get ready to sleep. Well, what are they supposed to do during the day? They have no place to, they have no place to go. I, you know, I think, I think your intentions are good, but I think you're going to find you're creating a lot more problems. And I, I am not in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Anyone else?
Hi, Jason Sarris here. Okay. Does the city council even know where people are going to go if this ordinance passes? No. You are going to rely on your partners for options. But with virtually non-existent shelter space nor interim housing available, what can they actually do to get people off the streets other than try to house people, which takes time? What is this ordinance actually going to solve? Nothing, other than moving people around. You're likely going to pass this ordinance without taking any responsibility for where people are going to camp. Instead, you will pass this buck to your partners. You hired the SAFE team at $775,000 a year to take calls for homelessness instead of police. And now you are going to have a special police task force enforcing this ordinance. Where is the logic in that? With over 20 Camp Integrity members being displaced, there could be 20 new campsites sprouting up all over San Rafael. Some of those camps will be closer to homes. Is this ordinance really what residents want? At least at Camp Integrity, there are porta-potties. But everyone should know, and I mean everyone, those porta-potties are not there because of the city. Those porta-potties are there because of the GoFundMe created by members of Camp Integrity and a concerned advocate. The city has refused time and time again to provide bathrooms for people living outside. This ordinance is poorly written and based on a knee-jerk reaction and will put an already vulnerable population under even more duress. It needs to be shelved.
Thank you, Jason. Your comments?
Good evening. My name is Jay Ress. I represent the retail business that these gentlemen alluded to. We are directly adjacent to the encampment. We share a chain link fence. East Bay Tire is the company I work for. We, about a year and a half ago, purchased Brandon Tire, which is a historical, one of the first tire companies in Marin County, and certainly in San Rafael. And we've put a huge investment into that company. It's partially a commercial business, business-to-business, and partially retail business. So, our face is the retail side of it. We experienced tremendous growth through the first year or so of our business, and really until the homeless encampment moved in. If you're going south on Lincoln, word 773 Lincoln, right next to the creek, that's all you see. You don't see our business. You see the tents and all the trash and all that stuff. We've experienced, as this gentleman alluded to, feces thrown at my employees, metal objects thrown at our company vehicles, taunting of my employees and customers. I don't by any means mean to diminish the homeless problem. I completely understand that. But from my perspective, there needs to be, there needs to be an answer that allows business like us to come in and invest in San Rafael and flourish. Literally, this week, my two key employees gave notice and quit, in large part due to their own fear for their own safety and location. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone else? Yep, welcome. Yeah, just wait, wait, come down. No, no, come on down, then start talking to us.
I don't necessarily want to say my name. Anonymous anonymity is one of those things that, for me, is kind of an important thing. I think bottom line is, there's no one-size-fits-all. So, you're different, you're different, you're different, you're different, you're different, okay? So, if somebody is severely mentally ill and throwing fecal matter at somebody, gee, you don't say, okay, gee, you're going to stay out here. No, you don't. That person belongs someplace elsewhere. So, if there are people who are not doing that, if you're not using drugs, you're not drinking, you're not fornicating, you're not trading sex for whatever, and you're just simply living outdoors for whatever reason you have, and you're being targeted for whatever reason you are, that's a very different circumstance. And there are people who have been raped. So, if a woman has been raped, she's not going to want to be in a room with somebody who's like talking sex talk. So, that woman is going to say, please don't put me in that shelter because I don't, I don't want to be in that room, right? So, you have to know those things. It's not like a, here's a Band-Aid that fits everybody's boo-boo. That's not how it works. So, there are people with very severe mental illness, as in, you're going to throw fecal matter at somebody, that's not good. And obviously, a person who owns a business should not have to lose their business. That's craziness. However, if you've got people who are like, look, I'm just sleeping in my car or whatever I'm doing, and I'm not boozing, I'm not whatever, and I'm not being loud or contributing to the danger in the situation, that's very different. And I do think the circumstances of asking people, I've gone across this country for different reasons, and I'm not going to address it because it's nobody's business. But the bottom line is, my situation is very different. And when I speak to a lot of homeless people, almost every single person has been raped, okay? Men and women, as children or as adults. So, that is a huge situation. So, if so-and-so rapes so-and-so, right, and they know it, then there should be legal situations going on. Because a person with mental illness is going to feel a lot better if that person goes to prison. So, I think there's a whole lot of things that people cannot just say, I'm going to walk around town, and you all have the same issues. That's, no offense, that's like, you're incompetent. Get a grip.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, anyone else? Yes.
Hello, my name is Jessa. I'm a homeowner and taxpayer in San Rafael. And although this is not the issue that I was originally here to speak on, what I've been hearing does make me very concerned that this measure will create more problems than it solves and will be very unfair to a number of our unhoused neighbors. I would love to see measures that address severe mental illness in the unhoused population. But I think that breaking up communities amongst the rest of the unhoused is the wrong way to go about solving this problem. And I do hope that this measure does not pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessa. Okay. Not seeing anyone else jumping up before. Anyone else? Did you want to speak? Yeah, okay.
So much to say that I can't say it all. I don't know what to say, exactly. There's no easy answers. I hope you don't pass the ordinance because 100, I can understand the schools and the playgrounds having a distance. But when you try to separate one group 100 feet, I mean, I can't tell distance, but I know it's a long way. People don't need to be isolated. That's cruel. We need, people need people. I would hope that we would look into more land because not everybody wants to be housed. Unfortunately, we're all different. We need more housing. We need a lot of stuff. This is not an easy solution in any ways. It's all over the world. We're dealing with it here. I do believe that people who act out, there should be some kind of consequence, but maybe not as harsh or something. I mean, when you're little, you get spanked. You learn. We haven't been spanking people in ways, well, you know what I mean, to kind of, kind of help them. I want to say this analogy because, you know, I don't know if it will help, but sometimes, I guess, people are doing this. There's people who need help and might need to cross the street. And also, I need is to have somebody hold a hand to walk across the street. Some people just pick you up and carry you across, would pick you up and carry you across the street. That's not the help we need. I'm doing that analogy because I'm sure it fits somehow. I think we can look at more land. There is a lot of land. I know we do want to preserve land. But I think we need a place, we need bathrooms, trash cans, and showers, and people who can work. I think we should give them dignity to try to help work. I just, I just, I guess I'm a goodie-giddy. I like to see everybody work out. And please don't pass an ordinance and isolate people. We have hard enough problems. Being homeless, you think that, yeah, I just want to say that is another job. It's a job being homeless and plus trying to keep another job.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Okay. I won't go too fast. I don't see anyone else in the chambers. So, I know we have an online community as well. Turn to the deputy city clerk. Does anyone like to comment?
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. I see one hand at this time.
You know, this is John Reynolds again in Maui, but I live in the canal, and I'm very concerned. I spend a lot of time with people, hanging out with people who are homeless. Some have got housed, and that's great, great. If people want to get housed or want to go to the shelter, that's fine. But they were saying there, that there's a diversity of people within the homeless community. Some people need community, need friends to be with. We don't want to isolate them from the support that they have within the homeless community. They're creative, and people within the homeless community know what's happening. Of course, we need to- Of course, we need to use law enforcement if somebody burned a tent or hit somebody, makes a bad for them. Of course, we don't want to have feces thrown at businesses. Those things don't need to happen. And of course, we don't want to keep it close to schools and playgrounds. But don't move people around like they're things. These are residents. These are people. These are dignified people that we have. They're residents. They're people like you and me, brothers and sisters on the streets. And we need to deal with people who have mental health or addiction issues. The safe team, maybe. I don't know. That came from the police. Some possibilities on the line saying that that's, you know, it's prevents suicide and prevents psychiatric emergencies. I hopefully, people like from the Marin Interfaith Homeless Chaplaincy, I'd like to hear from them. How do they think about this? How do, we've heard a lot from the homeless community. We need to hear from the homeless community and have the solutions. But we need to keep them close and have community with them, that they be supported and have dignity like anybody, any other resident. These are people, these are brothers and sisters. Just, just freedom as brothers and sisters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thanks. I wanted to clarify some of the statements. It was suggested that there are people who are addicted to drugs and there are people who are mentally ill, who are unhoused. And just a reminder that those populations are, you know, exist within the housed population as well. It's just that those people are able to shut their door at night and be crazy in their own homes or indulge in narcotics in their own homes without being exposed to public view. And I think also, one of the most important things I learned serving unhoused population when I worked in the emergency room is that a lot of the behavior that you see in the homeless population that is perceived as mental illness that was somehow innate or inherent is actually just the result of people being on the street for even a short period of time. Seventy-two hours of sleep deprivation can induce psychotic behavior. And most of these people who become unhoused have been through an extended period of extreme stress prior to losing their housing because it was the financial difficulty and the stress related to that, the stress related to an eviction, the loss of a job. Very often, an illness that precipitated their bankruptcy and thus their loss of their home, et cetera, et cetera. You know, it's unfair to, to, and it's dismissive. And it's also a cheap excuse to just say that, well, these people are nuts. These conditions that people are being forced to live in are inhumane and they make people very, very sick. So the city needs to take responsibility for.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised at this time. Give it just a couple of seconds. I see no further comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. I heard some questions in there, Assistant Director Hess. So we'll see if you heard the same questions. I think clarifying if folks can share a tent. I think there was some, it seemed to me that some of the questions were about making people be on their own tent. So if you could talk about how many people could be in a tent and maybe the number of people that could actually be on the path when you look at the distances. There's a question about other jurisdictions due for homeless. That's a short answer. We do, no. But maybe you could just talk about how we work at the county. And really, I would probably answer that question of what San Rafael does because that's what we're here to talk about, San Rafael Issues versus Mill Valley. The implementation timing, I think one of the commenters had thought it was just a one week. And I thought we're under the pressure that we had actually a much longer timeframe. So if you could speak to the implementation about that and if there's anything else that you would like to comment on that you heard from the public. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for the public comment. So beginning on the question of how many people could share a tent or also more broadly, how many people could camp together? It is not something that the ordinance directly talks about. We don't have any maximum. We're not counting individuals or actually even counting tents. We are creating a distance or a, you know, a maximum size per campsite of either ten feet by ten feet if it's an individual or ten feet by twenty feet for multiple individuals to camp in. Now, certainly, people can share tents. They're right. Absolutely, many people do. People also can camp in separate tents together. The, so ten by twenty is two hundred square feet. And conceivably, depending upon the size of the tent, you could get a number of tents into there. I think a lot of what we're trying to address with that is the real spreading out of belongings or items retrieved from the streets and from dumpsters that we have often seen in different camping environments, such as the Mahone Creek Path and others. Next, in terms of the number that we might see on the path, I have not really been giving a number publicly. What I would say, though, is that we understand that path to be about thirteen hundred feet long. Our distance between campsites is two hundred feet, which is about the length of the entire City Hall building. So imagining groups being spread out thirteen hundred feet divided by two hundred results in about six groups. We do not know or intend to regulate a perfect distribution across distances as people, you know, settle on where to stay. We also do not know how many individuals might occupy any potential camping area. So that is where the difficulty in creating a number around this of individuals lies. So the next question was talking about other jurisdictions and the county. We have a collaboration, certainly with other jurisdictions. I think we know that at San Rafael, we know that permanent supportive housing is the solution to homelessness. Regulating camping is an unfortunate reality that we're dealing with right now because we don't have enough permanent supportive housing. And that is always our North Star and what we're going for. We've invested millions of dollars in existing outstanding shelter and permanent supportive housing programs. And we have more that we expect to come online in the city. Additionally, beyond those project based types of programs, we have housing vouchers for individuals who are formerly homeless used in privately owned apartments. And that is by far the biggest contribution being made to housing people who are experiencing homelessness in San Rafael. Hundreds of landlords that are accepting our clients and I guess being willing to trust in the capacity and capability of our services system. Our county collaboration has been very strong. We talk very often. The county has been very much trying to include me in its different strategic initiatives, which I've been really appreciative of. And I think that everything from coordinating funding applications in order to ensure that we get the most as an entire community and thinking about how do we solve this problem regionally, I feel very positively about that collaboration. We collaborate on programs such as our shower program as well, which provides much needed showers to people who do not otherwise have access to them at the expense of many different cities in the county. And we collaborate on case management for the individuals that are using our system, our emergency services, the most and something that we're also very proud of. Finally, there is a question about the implementation timeline. That is something that we are going to be working with, with the whole community, including service providers and individuals that are affected. We do expect this to be a collaborative, compassionate approach that emphasizes safety and something that does not look like the types of encampment sweeps that we see that at times can really create dislocation and hardship for individuals experiencing homelessness. We care about that. We don't want that to happen. By far, our preferred strategy and the one we've been able to employ when we have closed down camps in the past has been this collaborative strategy. And I believe that our team, our police department and our public works team, as well as my staff and others at the city are very capable of engaging the community in the right way in order to get this done.
Mary Kay, I just wanted to make a couple of additional comments about safety and the trauma informed approach that we are currently undergoing in the community, but also are really planning. And as Chris mentioned, the question about how many people can camp together, I think is a really important question because we're mindful of the safety issues, the concerns about sexual assault, the importance of community and being together. So that's the ten by twenty camping area allows for people to be together, to have that sense of safety, knowing we don't want people to be isolated. So we're trying to strike this very, very difficult balance while we're putting our money towards this long term investment in permanent supportive housing and other alternative shelter to try to address all the concerns of the community, some of which are businesses and residents and the negative impact and some of the crime we've seen, which is just something that we have to do something about. But also trying to be, you know, really trauma informed. And we do care about all the individuals out there experiencing homelessness. And we're trying to take a very deliberate approach to make sure that we provide as many resources and supports in place during this process, that folks have that support. And I just wanted to add to the design of the approach not being by how many people can camp in an area, but mitigating for those impacts by having a camping area defined.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Additional questions before we get to comments? Do you have any additional questions? Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, I think.
Just questions, not comments yet.
Yeah, I think the question that I was listening for an answer, I didn't think I heard it, which was, I heard the mayor say that we heard from a question from one of the comment, from one of the attendees, was that it would only be one week. And my recollection, Director Hess, was that it would be at least thirty days. Is my recollection correct?
So, yeah, I'd like to be sure to clarify that. It would be thirty days from the passage of this ordinance, if the council chooses to do that, to the time that our enforcement capabilities would be in place. We would be beginning the education process right away. We are, in terms of enforcement, we are even capable of beginning the process of seventy-two hour notice that we give prior to any relocation shortly before that August sixteen date. However, I believe that we are envisioning a different approach that does not bring down a strong change occurring on that date if we can gain the collaboration of the community and be making measurable progress along the way.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Kurtz?
So I want to roll back just a little bit. I can't even remember the month. It was January or February. We had a study session about an interim shelter program, whether we call it a tiny home program or pallet. It's that step in between encampment or being on the street to permanent supportive housing. And it's something in between. Where are we at with that?
Yeah, definitely. There has been a lot of interest in, I'd say overall, pretty good support of the concept of a, an interim housing project or a tiny homes village, as it tends to be known. We are absolutely having conversations, studying, evaluating different proposals, trying to determine where we would put it, which is always the most difficult and challenging question. Given that a lot of organizations that we are talking with are really waiting to see the whole package come together in order to come on board, I've not been publicly specific about who we are talking with because we really want to have that package of what we're offering and at what location together when we come back to the council with that. I don't have a date to come back to the council because that issue of location is really something that comes together in a very unique way. I would just say it does not come together in a predictable way is what I mean to say. And if we don't have a location, then, you know, we just don't have a project. But if I may add, I do think that council's interest in the program is very much that it is a low barrier program that could serve any individual out there experiencing homelessness, regardless of what type of circumstances, whether they're connected to services or not. We could connect people to services. Or if they're just a few months away from getting into housing, it would be a place to wait that is safe and is supported, which they don't have when camping or staying in a vehicle.
Thank you. Thank you. And as a follow up question, and thank you for that because the council has expressed interest. Could you also look at whether it makes sense to have population specifics? So maybe the tiny home village would only be for women, for people identifying as women. So just something to think about. There's always unintended consequences, but that might be, it might be something that is missing in our current continuum of care, specifically for the population.
I appreciate that. That's definitely something that has been done in other communities. I think that we do have some specific kind of risk factors that we are aware of within this community. That, you know, gender and vulnerability to intimate partner violence being something that is a big risk factor, a giant risk factor for homelessness, a driver of homelessness, actually. And with the service providers involved in that, we would definitely be interested in looking at that possibility to solve a specific problem like that.
Thank you. Did you have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Bushy.
I want to follow up on your statement about describing your strategy and your implementation steps. The strategy sounds great. Encourage voluntary compliance in every, in every respect. I'm a little concerned about your description that as long as we're making measurable progress, we're not going to have any hard deadlines. What does measurable progress mean to you? And sort of what is, what do you need to see over the next, say, sixty days to feel like you're making measurable progress? And then the related question is, if you're not, do you feel that this ordinance gives the team sufficient authority to modify the strategy?
Okay, so first of all, thank you, Councilmember Bushy. And I must apologize if I misspoke about that. I think that we will need to create a deadline in order to motivate action. It's just not something that we are prepared to do yet until we really assess the issue with this imminent change occurring with the service provider community. More about the spirit of the question, though, after making that clarification. I would say that, you know, a reduction in the individuals that are camping there and hopefully that are entering different support programs to the extent that those are available is what we'll be looking at. We don't expect that there will be shelter for everyone, unfortunately. And some individuals may be relocating to other homeless situations. But in our experience, we are able to find shelter and housing for people who are involved in case management and are document ready. There are times when people might feel like, hey, since I'm going to be out of a place here, this might be a good time to look at something I've wanted to do for a long time, such as an inpatient recovery program. That has happened in my experience here.
And that sounds, and that sounds awesome. But now you're going to be very curious about your deadline. So you're going to have one. You haven't said it yet. Can you give us some bookends? Will it be less than thirty days, less than sixty days, less than ninety days?
Well, I think that we'll really evaluate that interdepartmentally and I wouldn't want to just take a guess. I've received feedback from the community, from service providers, in the range that they feel like outreach occurs within sixty to ninety days. in the range that they feel like outreach occurs within 60 to 90 days.
Okay.
But that is not, that is not necessarily what we'll go with. It's going to depend on a lot more than, than just what I think might work.
Yeah, 90 days seems like a long time. So just to add to that, I think part of what we're looking to see is incremental reduction in the numbers. And if we're seeing that movement and we're able to make that progress and there's a plan in place, so we are taking individual approach to the situation. So I think at the point at which, if individuals are not interested in receiving case management services and they're not engaged in that sort of support network and they're not interested or willing in moving, that's the point. And I think the reason it's hard to put a hard date on that is because we want to explore every option up to that point where... But I think it's, it is a matter of a couple of months before we can make that kind of measurable progress. It is hard to put a hard date on because if people are working a plan and we have a plan for them, then we want to be able to be a little bit flexible. But we are talking about a matter of a couple to few months.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seen any additional questions, other comments? And Councilmember Bushy, can you start us off?
The ordinance is required until somebody comes up with a better idea. We need to do this. Our businesses need it, our residents need it, our schoolchildren need this. This is public property. It needs to be used for public purposes, not terrorizing our businesses, not selling drugs and not setting fires. And yes-
Setting fires are from the rich.
Yes, that's what that-
For fuel uses.
Excuse me, sir. This ordinance allows us to create the environment that will encourage the people who desperately need outreach services and a vast range of treatment and housing. And if we, if this will help us get them into the treatment that they need, then it is, it's what we need to do now to move forward and address this problem. I support the ordinance as presented by staff and am ready to vote for it.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chris. And thank you, Sergeant Huber, for coming before us this evening and presenting more information on the implementation. I think in, when reading an ordinance from top to bottom, it has a very distinct sense that people, how is this going to be implemented? It does not necessarily speak to what you have been describing on the implementation. I'm holding us accountable to a lot of what your testimony has shared this evening about dignity and compassion for how it is going to happen. I'm hearing time that you are permitting to engage and educate. I'm hearing as much as possible, trying to make certain that we are engaging folks that can be prepared for housing opportunities. I heard you, Director Hess, describe the importance of helping folks gain documentation, clearing up credit. That's important. I'm hearing that there are folks that are in waiting list for housing that could come as early as October. As I shared in the last meeting, I'm most interested in the things that are going to resolve issues of folks not being able to find homes, which is creating creation of housing. I know that we have many things coming online, not the least of which are the South Aliso Project, 3301 Kerner. And I'll just circle back and close my comments by saying I hold us accountable for a lot of how you described the implementation of this ordinance. So thank you for providing that this evening, and I look forward to voting yes on this ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Thank you for the update. Normally, this, if we do a first reading, this normally comes back as consent. And I know there was discussion of whether this should just be consent or if we should have this step. And I think because of the importance of this topic and the importance of the community, it was important to bring this forward. So thank you for doing that and providing this level of detail. I hope this is an ordinance that is only used to ensure the safety of the homeless community, the safety of the business community and the kids with the school and the general residents. To me, it is a tool just for that case to address safety and issues and concerns. And I think that that, we need to have that piece for moving forward. We had success of getting people homed from SSA. We had success with Albert Park. Now we have another tool to help with Mahone Path. When we talk about and hear about encampments being cleared, and I've read, you know, in the paper about these, they don't have what we have in terms of the level of work and the level of support that's being put in place. And so I'm really appreciative of the work of our community to come forward with this. This is a, yes, this is an ordinance. Yes, it is a step that feels like it could be harsh, but I don't, that's not in what we do. It's not in anything that we've done with our homeless community. And so I think that we will use this. Again, it's in our pocket. But I think the first step is working with everyone. And more than, more importantly, in addition to, as Councilmember Hill said, working on having additional permanent supportive housing, I'd like to, you know, move forward as quickly as we can on some type of interim housing solution.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, first, I want to appreciate the people that came and spoke today, as well as the people that came and spoke at our meeting last week. It's not easy to stand in a formal meeting and talk about vulnerabilities and talk about what's important to the community. In addition to people that spoke, we also received emails, and I want to express my gratitude to the service providers because we have been in conversation with them. As Director Hess has talked about, we're going to continue to be in conversation with them. They are absolutely critical to the solutions to homelessness. Those solutions are services and housing. My colleagues have talked about permanent supportive housing and the investments that the city has done, 3301 is for example, and all the other ways that we give money to permanent supportive housing. In addition, services, wraparound services, when I mean that, it's case management to help bridge that gap, to help people take the next step. Semurfell pays into a specific case management fund out of our general fund because we so believe that these services need to be provided. And they had been provided by the county, but we wanted them to be more robust. We've talked about the SAFE program. These are things that a municipality of our size and funded like us tend not to fund. But we fund it because we recognize these are critical to moving people to the next step. We continue to support our service providers. Ritter Center is in the process of a new building. The city has been very supportive of working with them to achieve their goals. These are long-term initiatives, meaning that they take time to have it unfold, and they're starting to unfold. Homer Bound has Mill Street 2.0. Again, the city showed up and provided funding and resources to help make sure that project happened. St. Vincent's has been a great partner, both through their lunch, the lunchroom, as well as their case management. So we know how to work with our service providers. We're not going to solve it sitting here on the dais. We're not going to solve it with this ordinance. But what we are going to do is provide another tool of a layered approach. And I see this in a tool, in a toolbox. What's been happening at Mahone Creek, when I hear three times the calls for service, I don't even know how to defend that. It scares me for the folks in a long Mahone path who are living there, and it concerns me for the surrounding community. That is not okay that anyone's subject to violence. There was a really serious incident last Friday. So we firmly believe that having this decentralization or lessening the congregation will enable the violence level to go down and still offer their support because of the bigger areas, the 200-foot area, the 10 by 20 that people could live, be in. So the city has to take action. We are committed to taking action. This isn't the last conversation around homelessness. Mary Beth and I, since 2013, since 2019, this has been one of the key issues that this council, this staff and this community has wrestled with. We're continuing to wrestle with it, and we're going to continue to show up with the tools that we have that are possible. So thank you again. I know this is not the last conversation. We hope that we are able to get voluntary compliance and work with the folks there to get to the next step to get folks housed because that's what we can all agree on at the end of the day. People deserve to have a roof over their heads. I think everyone has spoken and I have heard support for this ordinance. We actually need an act, a formal... I'm going to look to the deputy city clerk. Do you want to read the adoption or is it just, the motion is just final adoption?
Correct. The latter.
Okay.
I move final adoption of ordinance 2030.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 4-0. Thank you all. I, we have two more items on our agenda. I'm going to let us all have a three-minute break because I think there might be folks who want to leave the chambers. I know people have been incredibly patient. So we're just going to do a quick stretch and we'll be back at 9:55. Yes. Thank you. Equally on the remaining items on our agenda. So thank you for letting us do that. Okay. We're waiting for our city manager, but I think we can get started. I know she's seen the reports, so we will start reconvening. Is that okay, Deputy City Clerk? Okay. We'll reconvene again. Everyone got a nice stretch there. So now the next item is a temporary street closure, the West End Block Party 2023. So thank you for those that have been patiently waiting for this agenda item. Here's the moment. Director Hinkle?
Good evening. Mayor Kate, councilmembers, Micah Hinkle, Economic Development Director, and I'll be presenting for staff tonight. Before you tonight is the West End Block Party. The West End Block Party is part of a special permit, special event permit process, which is a multi-departmental review, which includes Police Department, Public Works, Community Development, Fire and Economic Development. The application request triggers two permit types. Council approval for road closure and then a special event permit with a noise exception. You may recall, when you review special events, you typically see the road closures and then the police chief and police department will follow up with the actual approval of the special event permits. That's no difference. So that's what we're, we're here for tonight. As background, the West End Block Party, basically it's a special event closure of Fourth Street from F to G for outdoor gathering and amplified music. It originated from the COVID-19 pandemic response. So it was part of the Downtown BID's Dining on the Delights program. That later in, it was followed up by 2022. And it's grown so much, it actually credited its own kind of branding or moniker, West End Block Party. And then in 2023, we received an application for 45 event dates on Thursdays and Fridays from May to October. So it was an event that continued to grow in popularity. And it actually had impacts from that. Enough where neighbors came out. As part of the 2022, in 2022, back in September, we did hear members of the community had come out talking about concerns over the overall event. They came again in March and then also within in May. Those outreach concerns were really the event itself, noise, late event hours, the frequency of events. And that's really been a big one. Thursday and Friday nights, weekly, insufficient restrooms and litter. It's really key items on this because it really demonstrated, really, this event has grown. Started a really small neighborhood event, but then its popularity has grown to be much larger. As part of the engagement, council through the city manager asked that staff outreach neighbors. And we ended up, myself and along with other staff, outreach neighbors with concerns. Called everyone, everyone who spoke on this. I emailed them. I talked to them in person, really good understanding and feel about what this, you know, the block party was bringing, what kind of issues were out there. We also mailed notices, and that was, you know, per standard regulations, 300 feet. Also identify issues. We actually received written comments on that. As also part of that, we included a newer approach, which is an online survey. That was part of the mailed notices. And we received over 800 responses on that. And majority were positive, but once again, issues were identified. The same things were identified for all the outreach. And those issues identified were noise, event frequency, alcohol service, hours, litter and restroom availability. And these are really typical issues that we see with special events, especially if they're growing or not regulated. And in this case, as outlined in the staff report, when this came in as a COVID response, we had a much more streamlined permit review process. This process we're going through today didn't occur because we had an emergency order in place. So now we're almost going backwards, saying, okay, let's understand what these issues are. We kind of know what they are. So now it's also identifying mitigation measures to that. After getting the feedback from the survey and the written responses and the conversations with the neighbors with concerns, the applicant kind of took that feedback and provided a resubmit. So instead of 45 events, now it's down to eight events. On Fridays, and here are the dates outlined, the amplified music would be 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM with road closures from 5:00 to 11:00. As part of the review process, in the interim, with those staff working through the departments, we really focused on really what was called out here. We kind of have operational issues and then noise issues. So in order to mitigate some of these impacts, this coming from the Police Department, Community Development, operational police staff would be assigned to this event if it moved forward. A lot of times, those noise complaints or unruly participants or other issues, we'll actually have police staff assigned to this event. As a condition, if it, if it once again moves forward, litter control before and after the event, along with restrooms. It's interesting, we're kind of digging into porta-potties and restrooms, like, well, how many is too many? What do we need? We actually researched this and said, well, typically for special events, it's one bathroom for every 50 participants. So in looking at the event area, there's three restrooms provided by the Pine Size Lounge and the adjacent Whipper Snapper Restaurant. So those three restrooms, so that covers up the 150 participants. So there is, will be a conditioned place in there. If it exceeds that, then at that point they'll add additional restrooms if needed. But I also think having the police services available and other things will hopefully mitigate some of those impacts we're felt there. Another call out was, operationally was smoking in the event area. But in researching this, we actually have an ordinance. The city passed a no-smoking ordinance within the downtown. So this is a no-smoking special event. That really goes for all our special events. But the biggest factor for this particular special event is the noise. And in order to kind of maintain the noise provisions, talking with the applicant, we're gonna keep the standard eighty decibel limit that's allowed for special events. The key, though, is bringing in a soundboard technician, right? Control the volume, right? Make sure these things are mitigated correctly, along with the police staff on site to deal with any noise measurement. If there's a complaint or issue about noise, there'll be staff, police staff available to actually go and measure and meter that, make sure it's, if it's too loud, we'll tell the sound technician to turn it down to keep it within that decibel levels allowed by the city's noise ordinance. The chief, who'd actually approved the special event permit, is fully prepared to implement this. But really, the first question is, is council willing to move forward with the road closure authorization? So that's what's here before you tonight. And also, I'd like to welcome the applicant, which is the Downtown Business Improvement District, Sarah Tippel, and Adam Vialanti with the Pint Size Lounge. So if they like to present anything on this. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Director. Hello, Ms. Tippel, would you like to say a few words?
Hello.
Hi.
Good to see you.
Maybe put the mic up a little higher.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay, thank you.
So I am Sarah Tippel. I've had the honor of being the executive director of the BID for a year and a half. It's been pleasurable and joyful, and I really love my job. I'm also a resident of the West End. I grew up in Marin, my mom grew up in Santa Fe. I grew up in Santa Fe as well. I grew up in Santa Fe. My mom grew up in Santa Fe. My grandpa grew up in Santa Fe. So I'm a huge fan of downtown Santa Fe. I was also a manager of a small business on Fourth Street. So downtown Santa Fe is huge to me. I love it. The Downtown Santa Fe Business Improvement District is a nonprofit that was established in nineteen seventy-nine specifically to revitalize the downtown corridor and promote downtown businesses. The West End Block Party, which was born from our Dining Under the Lights initiative during the pandemic, helped create that vibrancy, promotion and revitalization that our downtown needs. Thanks to Adam's event background and experience, he really created something special for the city. The West End Block Party brings the community together for an evening of live music and livens our downtown, which is super important right now. As we've heard, there were eight hundred responses to that one survey. There was another survey that we did at the end of last year. And just hearing how important it is to have the revitalization and the fun and the community in our downtown, it was just really inspiring to read all the comments. I actually want to thank Micah with the City of Santa Fe, who's worked extremely hard in guiding and managing this process, the neighborhood outreach, solving the concerns. It's been a really great job. I love working with you. I also want to say, don't forget to go to downtownsantafel.org and see all the other fun things that we got going on. So that's my plug. We have a passport program coming up next month. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah, appreciate that. We'll see if there are any, oh, did you want to say? Generally, city manager, should we? I always like to hear what you have to say, Adam, but I want to make sure that we're doing procedurally.
Yes, Mr. Vialanti is part of the applicant, so that's.
Okay, come on up. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Adam Vialanti. I'm the owner of the Pint Size Lounge and the applicant for the street closure. Micah did a very thorough job explaining ninety-nine percent of what I was gonna say. So basically, this has been a very kind of extraneous process now that the COVID relief is gone. So now we're basically kind of reinventing a lot of the process, or it seems like we are. But anyway, I'd like to put out a big thanks to Sarah and Micah and all my neighbors that have participated in this on whatever side of the opinion they want. They've all been very patient. Over eight hundred people responded to the survey, which Micah pointed out. And there are some concerns for my neighbors, and I recognize that. Basically, over the last two-plus years, we did a lot of nights of music, and I understand that. So we've revised our proposal. Micah, by the way, the event time would be ten o'clock ending. We're done with music at nine and off the streets by ten. We always, we always were, so. Anyway, I just think that the new proposal with eight nights is entirely reasonable. The issues that Micah addressed, such as sound, litter, bathrooms, and security, I feel like we have a really good understanding of how to mitigate those issues. And I think with a weekly reporting of the events after the fact, we can keep close contact and just make sure that we're doing a good job. And really, that's all I have to say. There is one final thing I'd kindly request that my neighbors on either side of this topic, while expressing their concerns, focus specifically on the event nights and adhere to the agreed-upon parameters. Please retain from incorporating personal judgments, concerns, comments about me or my business into this discussion. Let us keep the conversation centered on the amendments and their impact. That's really what I ask, is that we just focus on the event. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Does that conclude your presentation at this point?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. I will turn to my colleagues for questions. I see Councilmember Bushy, go ahead.
I have a very specific question, and it's about the litter control. You called for a litter patrol. Exactly what does that mean? Who is going to do it? Where are they going to go? And how will they know if it's successful?
So it'd be the applicant would be required as a condition of a permit. It would be one hour before the event, one hour after. And then any noise complaints, or I'm sorry, any litter complaints from private properties adjacent to the event area, they can call and ask the applicant to come pick up if there's any litter within there.
So the patrol area, though, is just adjacent to this, around the perimeter of the area?
Yes.
Some of the complaints were from a little bit further afield. Are we open to adjusting the patrol area?
Yes, if needed, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz.
Just two questions. Who will monitor with all these different parameters in place of this ordinance? Who's actually the point person? Is it through the BID? Or is it our Police Department? Is it you?
In this case, it's actually been the Police Department. The Police Department is in charge of special event permit issuance. And they would do all the monitoring with this event. This is why it's really critical, very typical for our special events that have alcohol and live entertainment. Usually, a police officer is assigned. So in this case, we are making sure that'd be the case if it moves forward. So the Police Department will be that, so.
So they would be on site?
That's correct.
Okay, and then this is just for twenty twenty-three?
That's correct.
Okay, great, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Hinkel and all staff who contributed to doing the outreach. This has been a process. I am specifically interested in, you mentioned restrooms, and you mentioned, and I saw that there are three restrooms available, and there's the special event guideline around fifty per restroom. How is it going to be determined what the attendee number is? Is it going to be estimated? And who estimates it? And then if it doesn't exceed, what is, who makes that determination? And what is the remedy?
Typically, the estimate comes from the event organizer and how many people are there. Also, the attendees themselves are almost like self-regulating for any business or approach. If there's a long line within the operating businesses, where they're like, we really need some more portable restrooms, I think that's, once again, maybe a self-regulating approach. But if, I think if there is a trigger, what the real issue was, was there's urination outside, you know, on people's private property. So I was really trying to address that. But having the Police Department there and then other signage restrooms available, and one of the conditions would be to have signage, letting people know where the restrooms are. A lot of times, if you're in a special event, you wouldn't know that, oh, I can go to that business. I can use their restroom. But that would be part of the requirements within the event area. But I don't anticipate the hundred fifty or porta-potties being necessary. I haven't seen the numbers of the event participants get that high, but there is a potential possibility. So that's why it's a trigger approach. If it does, need does arise, then porta-potties will be brought in, along with handwashing stations.
Thank you. And then moving to noise, and I am noting that the eighty decibel limitation and that, again, the, I'm just, I'm trying to imagine this in reality. Is the officer standing there with a decibel reader and actually monitoring it every, so I'm just trying to figure out, I can't imagine the officer staring at it for three hours. I mean, what is the measurement process?
So it is the process that we have now for noise complaints. And that's why we even have police officers with noise meters. There's a noise complaint that comes in, they'll actually take a noise meter measurement at the complainant's resident to confirm that the noise exceeds the levels or not. So I would anticipate that. From the beginning of this one, since there's already noise concerns, the approach would be to work with concerned neighbors with noise impacts. And at the sound check level, actually identify those locations and take those readings before the event starts for confirmation that they're within the thresholds with the sound technician to adjust the noise levels. So it really is kind of a more of a common sense approach of, if it's too loud and you exceed the levels, turn down the volume.
Again, and then finally, on, with respect to just the complaint process, I can imagine as it's going on, if there is an officer there, I can imagine someone approaching the officer in person. If there are complaints that extend beyond, let's say there was a litter pickup that didn't work out, well, where would folks reach out to?
The same would be the special event coordinator. As I said, the Police Department has a sergeant in charge of all special events, who also does connect in with the officers who are at the event. So if there are issues that arise or something continues to be a problem, then they actually check in with the pin operator for modifications, make sure they're following those regulations that are identified within the permit. If not, then we can potentially pull the permit if there's no non-compliance.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few follow-up questions. You had identified noise, event number, litter and restroom, which my colleagues already asked questions on those. The last two remaining were alcohol and hours. Let's do the easier one first. The amplified music, and I think Adam said this in his comments, so the amplified music is until nine, and then people get an hour to disperse and go home. Is that correct? Confirming that, because.
That's correct.
Okay, because it wasn't clear in the staff report. And then the alcohol service, what was the control? What was, I'm sorry, the concern? You said that concern came up. So could you just talk about what the concern was and what the mitigation measure is? I mean, it's a bar that serves alcohol with music, so I was confused by that one.
Well, I think the concern at least was voiced when I had the multiple outreaches and conversations, was loud patrons at the bar being served later into the evening. But as I said, during the special event hours with the police officer there, I would anticipate that that would not be much of an issue or be a lesser issue of concern. Also, would the police officer able to address those issues if there's loud or unruly intoxicated participants? That would be resolved by that police officer.
Well, that's a different, I mean, intoxication and bad behavior is one thing, and this said alcohol service. And I just wanted to clarify because it's a bar, you're allowed to serve alcohol to certain hours, and that's well within the hours that's allowed in Santa Fe. Okay, just wanted to clarify. And there might be more questions that come up, but I will open it up to public comment. And again, thank you for the patience. I know many of you have been here since the beginning of the meeting. And come on, oh, and Angela, you had filled out a form. So do you want to go first or do you want to wait? I held your form. It's up to you, though. You don't have to, you can come down whenever you want. You can come down whenever you want, so someone else can go first. But I just, I had said that I would hold it and let you go first. But anyone else, come on down. We are ready to hear from you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Philip Miller. I'm a resident over here in Crystal Park. Been here about seven years now. And full disclosure, I'm a professional musician and a professional sound person and a neighbor of Mr. Vialanti. And I've been involved with helping him with those events for the last two years. And so I wanted to direct, Mr. Hill, I thought I might address your question about how the sound is going to be handled as far as that goes. I personally possess an SPL level meter. And so before there's even a complaint, it's my job to, you know, measure right on site and make sure that everything is according to hoil. And having said that, there is a certain amount of self-policing that's going to go on. Even though I have control of the soundboard, I do have to sort of, shall we say, crack the whip with the bands. And I have no compunction about that, nor does Mr. Vialanti. And we make it clear to them from the very start that if they can't keep it down and work with me so that we have control, then, well, they will not be welcome to come back. So I just want to assure you that we're serious, that we're earnest about making sure that we're going to be working within both the ordinances and what our neighbors, you know, wish to have happen. We have a vested interest in cooperating with everybody and making everybody as happy as you can be, considering, you know, it's all compromise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Philip.
I'll try to be brief. My name is Joel Ice. I have a business which is contiguous to this event, and we've been there for all of these events. And I have to say that what Adam has done with this in terms of building a spirit of community and building a sense of community could be seen as a model for other areas, trying to put something together to do something with the disorientation that's come from the post-COVID period. I think it's been a real healing process in ways that are almost impossible to describe. I suggest you come down and experience it. And also for the neighbors who've had some problems with it, if you come out of your apartment, come down and listen to the music. It might be a good thing to join your community. I have a couple of specific suggestions that might be helpful. I know Phil, I've known him for years. I, in my previous life, I was a technical director and production manager for many theater companies, including the Pacific People's Theater Festival, which was the largest theater festival in the United States until the Olympics in L.A. There were hundreds of performances in forty or fifty locations. Part of my job was to deal with, what Phil does on this one event, was to go around and make sure that it was a nice event for the neighbors. And I have a couple of specific suggestions that he might consider, and some of these might be stipulations for the event. Number one, the problem with the sound is not coming towards the audience. The problem with the sound, a lot of it, is coming from the monitor speakers, which are pointed towards the apartments in the other way, behind them. Those are the people who are complaining. So you need to take those monitors and turn them at an angle so they're not pointed at those apartments. Also, when they have the microphones set up, the individual singers do not have their microphones running through the soundboard. So if you have a blues singer that's going to screech at the top of their lungs and break brick, that doesn't go through the soundboard unless you create a system for the sound, which is similar to what you have in a recording studio, which is that all the microphones and all of the equipment runs through the soundboard, and the sound operator stands there and watches the DB. And if you tell you have that, they're really fighting it after the fact. So if you set it up in that way, you're going to ameliorate the problem more for the neighbors. Third one is turn it ninety degrees so the whole thing has the building behind it, and it won't go into the empty space behind it. And there's an abandoned store sitting right there. So those are some specific technical suggestions.
Thank you, Joel. If you have other ones, definitely share with Director Hinkel, because this is around the space.
Won't change anything except make it better.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for those suggestions.
That's what I used to do for a living.
Thank you. Hi, Jessa.
I'm a resident of the West End. I currently live on F Street. I've had a house there for the last nine years. I grew up on G Street, on the other end of the pint size. And I'm, what this is doing for the local businesses is great. I'm supportive of the event and the road closure, but the noise level has got to come down from previous years. I spent twenty twenty-one having no room in my house with all of the windows closed where I couldn't hear that band. And I was on the phone, talking to loved ones in lockdown, and I was hearing this event the entire time. I don't want that for another forty-five weeks, another eight weeks. I don't want that at all. Like, just keep the volume lower than it has been in the past, and we can all be happy.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
I'm Casey McCabe. I'm a resident on Oakwood Drive and I've lived here about 25 years. One of the things that impressed me most when I first moved here was this was a city that engaged people and had street life events that brought the community together on the street. I just think street life is really emblematic of a healthy community. And then when COVID came and the West End concerts started, and I started attending, you know, a lot of them, it just seemed so good and so fun and so necessary that I really couldn't imagine anybody having objections. Now intellectually, I understand why we can have objections. But I'd like to think this is one of those cases where the needs of the many vastly outweigh the concerns of the few. I really think it is that important. And having attended a lot of these, I can't say these things never happened, but I mean, I witnessed no problems with trash or restrooms, outrageous behavior, anything. We're a very sleepy community. And everybody, you know, can have a lot of fun and still go to bed at nine o'clock for a few nights a week. And it is that important. And I really hope you'll keep that in mind. Thanks.
Thank you, Casey.
Also, I believe most of the acts that appear at these shows are local from Marin. I think we should really be celebrating the incredible talent we have in Musically and Marin County, too.
Great, great point. Thank you.
My name's Joseph Adams. I live on G Street. I think you guys are all familiar with me. I firstly want to thank all of you for listening to me, my wife, contingent of people, much like the other woman who just spoke, who I actually didn't even know. She just vocalized exactly what we dealt with, which was just this unrelenting loud muse that there was no escape from. I wanted to thank you for bringing Micah Hinkle in. He's been really a person of integrity, who's been a great communicator, who I feel like has listened to us and really done a lot to bring some equity to the situation. I hadn't intended on speaking to these two things, but I do want to say that the gentleman who was in support of the music series brought up some really important nuances in terms of mitigating the sound. And even the own, the sound person said that we really have to police ourselves. That's what the problem has been. What I really would urge is that you have a professional sound engineer, not just after the fact, a police officer who is not, you know, specifically tasked with this type of work, but get us a proper sound engineer to really monitor the music. That would be greatly appreciated. I also sent you guys all an email with a number of documents that relate to the pint sizes usage permits and also former city council members who put really specific language in looking to safeguard neighbors for all of the same reasons that the people who do have complaints have been complaining about. Specifically also, it's, wanted to mention that, yes, bars are allowed to serve alcohol. The pint sized lounge usage permit specifically states that they cannot play amplified music even inside of the bar, let alone outside of the bar. So that's, I think, something relevant in this case. And what I would say is that had the proper permits and procedures went into place in the beginning and that this music series had only been in keeping with the rest of the dining under the lights, you probably wouldn't have heard from me. And so what I'm,
If you could wrap up, Joe.
Sure. I'd like to see a modification to the present application of only six nights that would have been in keeping with the six nights that all of the other dining under the lights have been held to. And I also would encourage to have a combination of non amplified music that might include jazz, classical, blues, and even some rock. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe. And thank you for your email earlier.
Thank you.
Now Angela. Welcome.
Hi. Is this okay? I'm Angela and I live on G Street near Fourth. Thank you for referring us to Director Hinkle. He has been a great advocate for us taxpayers. So far this year, we've had peace and quiet at night. For this too, I am thankful. Instead of coming up with an unbiased survey, the planning department wrote a push pull. I can imagine whose idea it was as well. A push pull is a marketing technique in which an individual or an organization attempts to influence prospective voters' views under the appearance of conducting an opinion poll. This push poll has created a completely useless data set because it is biased in four very distinct ways. First, it is a push poll as every question pushes you in a certain direction. If this survey were unbiased and the opinions of those affected by the noise were what the survey was actually seeking, the questions would be undirected, open handed, and completely neutral. Sorry, I don't know why I'm so nervous tonight.
Doing great.
Second, a neighbor and I spent several hours going door to door in the affected area. The average response rate to a public survey is five to 30%. And we found that only roughly one in five of our neighbors actually received the survey in the mail. This means you're basing your conclusions on approximately 10 or so households. Third, because anyone could participate, Adam used his contact list on social media to dilute the poll with hundreds of superfluous opinions, therefore skewing the results of the poll in his favor, making the entire exercise meaningless. Fourth, since all it was needed to vote was an email address, not a physical one, a person could vote multiple times and most likely did vote multiple times. I mean, really? 800 people responded? Really? Use a proper, until a proper unbiased survey is conducted that gives a voice to those residents within 300 feet and no one else, all future concerts should be suspended. The whole purpose of the survey, after all, should be to aggregate the opinions of those within the affected area, not to change their minds. Finally, the COVID emergency ended on May 11th. There is no reason to approve any more excessive noise in a residential area.
You could wrap up. Thank you, Angela. Yep, thank you.
Hello, Mayor Kate and council members. Thank you. And thank you, Michael, Micah, for engaging with us. My name is Bob Olrich. I'm a 35 year resident of the West End at Fourth and G. And I'm here tonight to tell you about how I transitioned from being someone who supported this event with limitations to someone who is completely against it. So it has been pointed out numerous times over the past year that Mr. Vialante prefers to cheat the system to his favor as a way of accomplishing his objectives regarding the pint sized lounge. That, that surfaced again here just recently because he blasted, he and his friends blasted that survey out on social media and to subvert the, the results in his favor. There aren't 800 people living in a 300 foot radius of the half pint. That is a red flag for a, for a biased results and why it was incorporated into that recommendation is beyond me. And Mr. Hinkle's, he notes that there were 1800 and they're all in favor of this thing. And that would be just absolutely miraculous. And meanwhile, Mr. Vialante has not ever, ever reached out to a single neighbor to address any of these complaints, not once. Not me, not anyone else. And he's got his entourage here with him tonight, and I want to share something with them. Because worse than all of that behavior is that I became the target of a harassment campaign. And what that meant was that someone came up onto my roof in the middle of the night and they crawled across the roof, trespassing, and then took a bow movement outside of my kitchen window, right where I have my meals. That happened at least four times before it stopped, before, after we placed warnings about the cameras on the property. And here's what, and, and in fact, there was another channel of that harassment by someone who was actually in this room tonight that I know of for a fact. And here's what I want every one of these people to know about that. One is that it was personal and it was a direct result of my vocal opposition to this event. Two, I'm particularly a target because Adam Vialanti thought I was a friend of his. Number three, it wasn't random. This person knew the property and they didn't bother any of the personal property that was up there available to steal, like bicycles and other things that would be highly likely to be steal. And four, this is, this is behavior of a depraved individual. This is someone who, someone who attempts to gain power through cheating and through not following the rules. And then someone who doesn't play by the rules, I will. So the mere proximity of this immoral harassment to this permit request should be enough that the city of San Rafael never again issues any permits to the benefit of this, of the pint sized lounge. And if Mr. Vialanti wants to be a concert venue, he can rent Georges up on Fourth Street, but his neighbors don't want to pay for his perennial failures of running his business.
Thank you, Bob, for your comments and your email previously.
Hi. My name is Diane Pollock. I live in San Rafael, in the Sun Valley area. I and hundreds of my friends would walk down to the pint size and have a wonderful time. As some, as somebody mentioned before, I never saw any unruly people. There was no trash around that I could see. I was able to use the bathroom whenever I wanted. Yes, there are some unruly people that come sometimes and they're, you know, our exceptions. Somebody, maybe one person seemed to harass that guy. But this was a wonderful event for so many people. I cried the first time I was there because, you know, after being locked up a lot with COVID, the sense of community and the fact that people were out there having music, dancing in the streets. It was a wonderful event. It brought a lot of people together and we were extremely sad to see it go. I understand that those noise complaint people were, you know, maybe it was too much. But I believe that, you know, you could cut it in half and have it on Fridays. And, you know, we, it, it was fantastic for the community. It was great for the businesses. And I would personally fundraise to do some noise canceling headphones for the people that really don't want to hear it at all. I mean, you know, I'm sure that those guys can work to keep it at 80 dBs. But these Apple, I, you know, noise canceling headphones are really great and
Let her finish, let her finish. She listened to your comments.
I just think that hundreds of people have a wonderful time doing this. There are, you're close to a commercial area, even though you're residential, we can keep it quiet. And, you know, I think that we can all work together. We can cut the music, you know, cut the time in half. And, you know.
Thank you for your comments, Diana. Yeah, thank you. And, okay.
Hello, good, hello again. My name is Michael Jobe. I live with my wife Susan Zalinski at 16 G Street, which is three houses down from the pint size, right in the middle of the block. We are very lucky and fortunate to have this event. We were super lucky to have it during COVID. I want to thank Adam for being so, for recognizing the importance of bringing community together. And he also is really spot on keeping, running a really tight ship. He's got a great crew that works with him. They are out of the street by 10 o'clock. You wouldn't even know that a concert even happened at that point. The volume is not a problem from our house where we are. We've never had a problem with it. We've had no problem with trash. It's a clean, tightly run ship. I think it's unfortunate that it's come to this point where we should be celebrating community and bringing people together, bringing unity of people together, all to enjoy and revitalize our downtown. We keep talking about, oh, we need to build an eight story building up on the corner of E Street and Fourth Street to bring more people into town, to revitalize it. It's all about revitalization, but then we talk about getting rid of events like this, which is counterproductive. I don't see any point in that. So I am a huge proponent of it. I love this event. I think it brings community together and thank you, Adam.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else in the chamber? Yeah, don't be shy. Come on down. Don't be shy.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Kerr. I live in San Rafael. And I don't know, Adam has been a neighbor and I've attended many of, and I've performed at many of the events. And my husband is a licensed professional sound engineer, who spoke earlier, Philip Milner. So he's very conscientious about the sound, the volume. He's, you know, he's always there with his monitor, checking and checking because I just, this event has been wonderful. I've never seen anybody, I've never seen anybody drunk or unruly. There's never been a problem with the bathrooms. There's like all these problems where they don't exist or they haven't existed. Maybe they'll exist if the, you know, if more happens. But since it's from 45 to eight events, it's very unlikely that much is going to happen. And I just wanted to point out that the series has provided a lifeline for hundreds of musicians and nearby businesses in bars and restaurants, and it's brought such joy to everybody who's up and dancing and participating. It's tremendous community and it's very important. And Adam has historically, I mean, as long as I've known him, he's been all about community from doing the West End Festival. He volunteered for San Rafael Porch Fest. He's always been about community and generosity. And I think sad that his efforts have not garnered the support that, that's deserved. And it seems to be being hindered by just a few malcontents. So I'm sorry to see that. And there are hundreds of people who benefited from it, who love the event. And it's the only thing bringing life to the neighborhood. And I think if the music series is further stymied, it's just the final death knell for an already moribund West End. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anyone, oh, yep. Yeah, sure, come down.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to request that the council forgive my appearance. I got off work in Kansas right here. I didn't have time to change. My name is Eric Vals. I live in San Rafael. I'm an alumnus of Sun Valley School of Davidson of SR. And I don't know how long the pint size has been around, but I don't remember a time when it wasn't there. It has been a fixture for generations. I've been, and I remember when that part of, like Fourth Street just died after E Street. And, and in recent years, I've been incredibly impressed to see how vibrant it's become. I think I've done some sound in rock shows myself. I think 80 decibels is excessively reasonable. 9:00 PM on a Friday on the main street in a downtown, you know, seems, seems exactly what one would expect. I'm not entirely unsympathetic, but it seems unreasonable to me that somebody would live blocks from Fourth Street and expect to not hear something on a Friday night. You know, again, I, I understand people's concerns. But it, it really is a local minority who wants to outweigh a larger group. I mean, quite frankly, I resent being called superfluous as a Marin resident who likes to go out. I've talked to young people who've moved here. You know, we're building apartments and those are a lot of young professionals moving in. And one of the most common complaints I hear is this place is dead after eight o'clock, even on a Friday, even on a Saturday. And as for litter, I just think it's really funny that, you know, small business or you can't even really call it counterculture and rock and roll is wholesome and is apple pie now. But, you know, I've never heard anybody say, I saw a Whole Foods pizza box on the floor and they need to go. So I don't know why small businesses get targeted. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Kenny Cast. I'm a resident on H Street. I moved to San Rafael about 14 years ago and I have now considered this my home. I moved to San Rafael about 14 years ago and I have now considered this my home. And one of the reasons why I enjoy it as my home is because of the culture and because of the arts and because of the people and the community around it. And what Mr. Vialanti has done is he has fostered that within his own community. And I believe that we should champion that. And I also believe that what he's doing is a good thing for the community and it's a good thing for the local artists. It's a good thing for everyone. And I believe someone mentioned before should serve as a model for other communities. And that's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Bornstein. I live at 111 G Street. I live about 50 yards from that pint-size lounge. I don't have an issue with the noise. I never have. I thoroughly enjoy the fact that I can walk across the street, listen to some music, have something to eat, something to drink. I don't have to drive anywhere. So I really enjoy that. I have neighbors in the building I live in that have children. None of them have an issue with the noise. It's finished at 9 o'clock. Kids are asleep. So I like to say I really hope that you vote to keep this because it's been fabulous for myself, my family members from Nevada, and some of my friends that come down also to listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anybody else in the chambers? Yep, welcome.
Hello. My name is Marcus. I, uh, I've worked closely with Adam over the years. And back when this was the West End Village Celebration, and now it's grown into what we have today, which is the West End Block Party. Everybody has their own things to say about this event and personal things, maybe about the event owner. But one thing that I think hasn't been mentioned is the fact that he goes through the right channels. He's doing things the right way. One thing that I know about Adam is that when it comes to doing things on the up and up, he's going to take the time. Micah, you've been very instrumental in this process and you have the proper mitigation strategies. And there's things put in place for, you know, the complaints that we have. Obviously, it's, it's an event. There's going to be people that disagree with it. But one thing that I I do want to commend Adam for is always just doing it by the book, doing it by the right way. And yeah, he lets the chips fall where they may. And that's one thing that I personally have a lot of respect for him about, and it's not easy to do it. And yeah, that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Marcus. Okay, anybody else in the chambers? I don't see anyone standing. Oh, yes, I do. Okay, come down, Dan.
Good evening. My name is Adrian Biggs. I've been a resident of San Rafael Gerstle Park off and on for 25 years. And I wanted to say a couple of things about Adam Vialanti. It really hurt to hear some of the negative things that people were saying about him tonight. I know him as a man of integrity who's done a lot for this community. To answer someone's question, he's been in business for, I believe, 30 years. That's considered legendary around here. I also wanted to mention that he did not in any way go out and recruit friends, families, his posse of supporters. When people started hearing rumors that this was going down, he actually self-deflected. He said, I don't want to talk about it. Go through the proper channels. The city will be announcing something. There will be a survey. And so I'm really nervous because I'm really passionate about this, this part of our cultural fabric. He responded to people saying, there's information out there. If you would like to support this, please do. He didn't recruit people. It was people who were outraged, thinking that we might lose this valuable aspect of our community here. I believe also on that survey, you couldn't take it more than once. So as somebody mentioned, people could have taken it multiple times. I don't believe that's the case. Also, in the survey, I believe it asked where you lived and if you, I'm assuming that if you said you lived in San Rafael, your voice would have been given a little bit more weight from somebody who may have lived in Nevada. That's just an assumption. Perhaps that's how the survey worked. I'm hoping it did. 800 responses, mostly positive. I have to say, he's really engendered a lot of passion in this community and I would be, along with many other people here, very sad to see it go. Eight shows during the season is quite reasonable. It does support a lot of local musicians. And it's made the West End the vibrant destination that it has finally become. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
Sorry, I was so nervous.
No, you know what? We actually.
I'm not a public speaker.
Can tell you, we can't tell, just so you know. Until you said that, none of us knew.
Hi, my name is Jane. I'm also not a public speaker. I'm here to support this event at pint-size. It has been a lifesaver for so many of us. A wonderful gathering place, great community, fantastic musicians. I think about supporting them and all the businesses downtown. This event has brought people from all over Marin, not just San Rafael, but all over Marin. We all enjoyed so much and I think it's great for all of San Rafael because people support the restaurants, the bars, and it's just been a wonderful, wonderful event. And I hope that we can continue it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Okay. I think almost everybody in the chambers has said something, not seeing anyone else. Okay, I will move to the virtual community and see if there's anyone that wants to comment on this item.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear that notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. And each speaker will have two minutes to speak. I do see a few hands.
Good evening, council. My name is Cody Blocker, connecting on my wife Maddie's Zoom account. I live on Bella Reed Avenue in San Rafael's West End. And I'm the manager of Art School of SF Bay, a local small business that recently invested in an educational space in the West End between Bordenaves and Istanbul Rug Company. We're an art school with aims of providing education to kids and adults and everything in between. And I got to say, the West End Block Party played a huge part in our decision to invest in our new business here. And in turn, in our decision to invest in the community. San Rafael is home to one of only 14 state-designated cultural districts in California. And it's specifically designated as an area with a high concentration of cultural resources and activities. And, and yet, if you go out on Fourth Street on an average weeknight throughout the summer, I can tell you, it feels kind of dead out there. Like, we're a city of 60,000 people and we have a huge section of downtown that kind of feels dead, but it's bursting with opportunity. As people have already told you tonight, as that survey of 800 people told you tonight, there's more than 800 people living in the West End who don't live within a 300-foot radius of the pint-size lounge who feel affected by this decision. It's, it's unreal to say that that's a superfluous part of the community. So we, superfluous West Enders, have enthusiasm and passion by the hundreds. And I'm not to say here that I just want the West End Block Party. I'm here to say that our city, our citizens, our businesses need events like this. Abolishing this joyous, community-oriented event for the opposing few voices would be a huge disservice to the West End at large. And I'm sure that the council will come to a view that champions the.
Thank you, Cody.
Susan, we're ready for you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, so I am a 27-year, my name is Susan Sharp. I've lived in San Rafael 27 years, 21 of those on Lincoln San Rafael Hill, so it's walkable to downtown. We used to enjoy live music at the Phoenix on Fourth Street, at the Tavern, at Georges. All this is gone. Now, if we want to hear live music, we have to go over to Fairfax. This event has been so wonderful. We went to so many of these events at the West End Block Party. They support local musicians. Children go, pets go, the community's there. It supports the merchants. All ages go and it's free. It's, it's just a fabulous event. And the way this ordinance has been presented is very respectful and offers solutions to the sound issues and to many of them, the concerns that people might have. I hope that you will not let the rest of this summer go by without this event. We need it back. And whether you decide there's six or eight or nine of these events, please bring them back to us so that we can test out these new ideas and make sure they all work and then make it an annual event. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Susan.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the time this evening. I know it's late. I wanted to echo what some other people had said. I don't have 14 years or 25 years of street cred here. We've only been in the West End for two years. But the reason we selected this city over any other city in the Bay Area was because of what Fourth Street was like to visit when we were looking for homes. It's incredible. And it's incredible to have something to do on a Friday night at 9:00 PM. And I agree that this is a 60,000-person city. Living downtown in a city as big as this, it should be assumed really that you're going to have some noise during the weekend evenings. And I'm so happy and proud to be a part of this. And I support Adam and the team and everyone behind this. And to Micah, thank you. So please, we are behind this and we hope that it can continue.
Thank you.
Milton, we're ready for you.
Oh, hi, hi. Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Milton Aguirre and I live in Chula Vista, you know, Lincoln Hill. And I do enjoy my summers of walking down the hill through Boyd Park and getting to the Quipper Snapper Ford, the best fish duck was north of the Tropic Capricorn, like a couple of Beth and Texas. And I enjoy the music and has been always beautiful and great. But never seen really issues with trash or so. And, and they also, they don't, they only sell beer and wine. There's no, you know, hard liquor. So the only complaint I have is that I hope we start this process next year earlier because, you know, we're like halfway through the summer and, you know. I appreciate all your efforts, you know, putting this back in place. And I thank you for your time. I mean, it's just amazing. Issues all night long, but, you know, this is good. Thank you.
Thank you, Milton.
I see no other hands at this time. I'll just give it a few more seconds. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. We heard lots of comment. I actually didn't come up with any questions. I did not hear any. I heard lots of advocacy or concern. So I will open it up to my colleagues, see if they have any questions before comments. No. Does Morgen, would you like to start?
Sure.
Okay, we'll go to comments.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Micah. Again, I shared my gratitude earlier and to all staff. I see the chief spillar in the front row. I know it took many departments to look at this, including Public Works and Community Development Department as well. So thank you for, for creating that collaboration to examine this. It's clear from the public comment that folks have taken sides on this. And I know that there's a tendency to do that around situations like this. I am going to support the permit as proposed. I am very interested in making certain that the regulations that I think are reasonable are carried, carried through in the way that they're described. I'm in support of making certain that we can create events like this in our community. And irrespective of the numbers, I've heard a lot of comments about, well, did the survey reflect this? I'm not moved by necessarily the numbers and I'm not interested also in allowing dominant culture to say, well, we're just going to move in that direction. I do hear the concerns of, of local folk and I do think that the regulations are reasonable. I know that, Micah, you provided a history of where this has been. And I've heard the testimony of community members throughout that process. And that's, it's, I've heard every single word. So I think this makes sense. The number, the night, makes sense. So I'm interested in seeing how this goes this year and look forward to it being inside of the parameters described. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy, next.
I support the proposal as brought forward. I'm grateful to our staff and the staff of the BID for helping us find a, a middle ground that captures the benefits of these events, but does so in a way that mitigates the impact on the neighbors. And I think this proposal does that. I'll be very interested in the steps that we take to ensure that there's compliance with all of the, on all of the limitations. But I'm prepared to support the proposal as brought forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
I'm also prepared to support the proposal. I've loved seeing the evolution of West End. Over the last 20-something years that I've lived here, it really has changed. Mike, I really appreciate all the work you've done in working with the community and the outreach and the willingness of all the residents. And there's a level of compromise here that I haven't seen necessarily before. So I really appreciate to get to this point. And I think it's, I think there's a great opportunity. I do appreciate the collaboration of hearing maybe there's opportunities to even improve the sound pieces around that. And I'll leave it to the experts to work on that, but it sounds like there might still be additional opportunities. And we need to keep the conversation going as we go through the opening, I guess, of the season. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank everyone who stayed. And San Rafael is a complex city. We talked about, many people said we're a city of 65,000. There's a lot of issues. You heard many of them this evening. And so, so thank you for, for staying and making comments. And it's not the first time that we've actually had this conversation within the chambers. And what we said earlier, what I said earlier, there was a void created when we had COVID. I mean, it was just a dark place that we all went to in our own ways. And Adam really did step up. And I understand that the way he stepped up, it was very organic. And I will own the part that we did not do. I was not involved with reaching out to the neighbors in the beginning. That might have mitigated some of this angst, as you said, kind of the side choosing. Because I think we all want the same thing here, which is we want a vibrant community. We're always going to be a bedroom community a little bit. We're not going to be at 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM. I'm just going to say that. I don't think that's who we are. But I do think we're a place that people can bring their kids. I love the pets, okay? And, and bringing community together. I want a, a community, yes, for San Rafael. I actually want people coming from Fairfax here because then they're going to go eat at Subor, Mexico. You know, they're going to go to kitchen table. They're going to go to other places. And you have to have that destination quality. And Adam has created that. Your willingness, Adam, to compromise, I mean, 45 and eight are really, really different numbers. And some people would just, you know, say, forget it and walk away. So thank you for sticking with the process and the conversation. Like Councilmember Bushy, I know that there'll be the compliance. I know that everyone's going to be watching. But I support this. I want our community to be vibrant. I live in the West End. I can hear the music. I'm not as close as the people on G Street who, and I, and I can understand what it was like to have the music and not being able to get away from it. I do think this hours till 9:00 PM, I mean, that to me is, makes total sense. I would also be interested, once we see how this year goes, having it match the farmer's market dates a little bit better. And that's the kind of starting earlier that you were talking about. But I don't want to put the cart before the horse because, again, we want to be in community. And for the neighbors, we, we've heard you. You've been very, you've been very good at communicating your concerns. You've been very good about where the city has fallen short and we can take it. I, I think we did fall short on this one. And Director Hinkel, not quite, you know, coming in on a white horse, but kind of because he came in recently and really fixed a situation that was really messed up. And I don't know if Sarah Tipple, she might have left. Oh, there she is in the back. And Sarah did a great job of kind of picking up the pieces as we had turnover in staff. And so I definitely want to give a shout out to Sarah as we all try to balance. as we all try to balance the type of community that we want. So I'm hopeful that the neighbors will be pleased if the volume is lower and maybe even find themselves out there once in a while when it's music that they appreciate. I don't know if it's going to be classical. I hear you, Joe, but I don't know if that's what it's going to be. But hopefully there'll be something that we're all excited about and that we feel good about. So thank you, Director Hinkle, as well as all the departments. Thank you, Chief Spiller. I know this actually, the decision-making ultimately comes also within your department. So we have heard that there is support of it. So I would look to Councilmember Hill to read the resolution.
I move to adopt resolution authorizing the temporary closure of streets in San Rafael for the West End Block Party 2023.
Second, moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Keith.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. Thank you all. And we're going to zoom into the next one. You can stay for the NOFA, but otherwise if you just want to quietly creep out so we can keep our meeting going, that would be great. So thank you all. So our next item is the 2023 Affordable Housing Notice of Funding Availability Funding Recommendation. Alexis, thank you for your patience. As we got to this, we don't often start agenda items after 11. This one's very important. So we are going to do that. We are going to get to it. And hopefully that is okay with you. I think it is okay with you because you're here.
Yep. We can see it. Welcome. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Alexis Kaptanian, Housing Programs Analyst. And tonight I am presenting responses to the city's 2023 Notice of Funding Availability, or NOFA, for affordable housing development, along with some funding recommendations for your consideration. In April, the city issued a notice of funding availability in the amount of $1.4 million for the acquisition, rehabilitation, or new development of 100% affordable rental or ownership housing projects. The city council is able to authorize additional funding above that published amount at its discretion. The city invited qualified affordable housing developers to submit requests for funding for construction or preservation of affordable housing. And the application deadline for this NOFA was May 15th by 5:00 PM and the city received three responses. The funding recommendation would draw from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which currently has an unencumbered balance of $2,034,000. A panel of city staff evaluated projects based on criteria that is published in the 2023 Notice of Funding Availability. And the city received three responses, which I'll walk through momentarily, totaling $2.6 million. Collectively, the projects would result in the completion or rehabilitation and preservation of 169 deed-restricted affordable housing units. First up, the Eden Housing project at 3301 Kerner will convert an existing three-story commercial property to 40 studio and one-bedroom units of permanent supportive housing for homeless or formerly homeless households with mental illness at a site near services and amenities. The city provided $850,000 in gap funding for this project last year and prior to that contributed $1.25 million for the county's acquisition of the parcel through Project Home Key. The project team closed on its construction financing in April 2023 and started construction in early May. However, the building structure requires modifications because of its location in a floodplain. The recommended, the recommended funding would be used to address this issue through a redesign, including raising the finished floor of the first floor residential units. Staff recommends awarding a $250,000 grant to the project based on the deep affordability level, permanent supportive services, and overall addition of units to the city's housing supply, as well as the opportunity for a three-way funding match. Eden Housing applied for permanent local housing allocation or PLHA funding earlier this year to help close the funding gap for the redesign. And the project was awarded $250,000 in PLHA plus equivalent county trust fund dollars, all contingent on a city match. Staff's recommendation is to fulfill the $250,000 match from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund so that the project can receive equivalent permanent local housing allocation and Marin County Affordable Housing Trust Fund awards. Together, the awards will total 750,000 and this will, award will help ensure that the project is completed and placed in service on schedule. This table shows the variety of funding sources that Eden Housing has assembled to complete the project. Next, staff recommends a grant award of $200,000 to Canal Alliance for the renovation of four units, including full renovation of kitchen and bathroom, new flooring, paint throughout, and funding for temporary relocation of the tenant households. Canal Alliance has owned 12 units at Marin Villa Estates for over 20 years and the units have not been updated during this time. These units are all deed-restricted for households earning very low or low incomes and currently they are occupied by families with school-aged kids and a senior. At $50,000 per unit, this recommendation aligns with the stated Notice of Funding Availability criterion for a reasonable per-unit city subsidy. Last month, Canal Alliance was awarded $180,000 in Community Development Block Grant funding to renovate two of the units at 153 Novato Street in Marin Villa Estates. The NOFA request under consideration tonight is for units at 161 and 165 Novato Street within the same property. Finally, staff recommends awarding a $1 million residual receipts loan to support the rehabilitation of two adjacent properties in the Terellinda neighborhood. In late 2022, Bridge Housing acquired Terellinda Manor and Northview, preserving 125 units of unregulated affordable housing that otherwise would have been purchased by one of 11 for-profit bidders. Marin County awarded a $6.25 million loan through its Housing Trust Fund to support the acquisition of the property. And the units are now restricted through a regulatory agreement with Marin County to add or below 80% of Marin County area median income. This table shows the funding sources that Bridge Housing has assembled to complete the acquisition and rehabilitation. Altogether, approval of these three recommendations will result in a fiscal impact to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund of $1,450,000. Presently, there is $2,034,000 available in the fund. And so if the recommendation is funded in full, it will leave 584,000 unencumbered in the fund. City Council has the following options and we are recommending that you adopt the resolution authorizing the expenditure in fulfillment of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund 2023 NOFA. And I am available for questions along with Assistant Director Chris Hess.
Thank you. Questions? Is that a yes question? Okay, Councilmember Hill, okay.
My back of the envelope math, when I see 64 million into 41, basically 40 studios plus a one-bedroom unit at Kerner, that is astounding. Can you confirm that that math is right? It's about 1.5 million per unit. If, obviously there are common, probably common areas and other parts of the facility, but that is a staggering number.
So, so one thing that I, I just want to clarify, I mean, it is, but I also want to clarify that included in this list there is operating subsidies. So there's a almost $20 million operating subsidy from the County of Marin and the, there's also the original land and building donation, a little over 7 million. So yes, all of that together, those aren't just construction costs.
That's helpful. Thank you. I was trying to do the math. That's really a lot. So thank you. So what I'm hearing is that there was the acquisition itself. There's the rehab in addition to other operating budgeting as well.
Correct. We wanted to show sort of the full picture here, but this is not, it's not a $64 million construction cost.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My question.
Yep, Councilmember Bushy, any questions?
Just really quickly, it looks like it's just the Novato Street one that doesn't have a, a, another source of funds to get them to, to done. Is that right?
That's correct.
So what happened? So are they going, just going to do a couple of units or, or what, what's the plan?
So I think that one, they have been working on, they, they did submit community development block grid application and also applied to city funding. I think that projects of this size, it can be more challenging to assemble a package of funding because it's not as to scale as some of the larger projects. And so I think what we've recommended here is a $50,000 per unit subsidy for four units. However, and so they could, if they were not able to leverage those dollars, they could come back for another funding cycle to the city for additional dollars. I think we've also had conversations with the applicant about perhaps leveraging their current workforce development program to see if they can tap into workforce development dollars. And so Director Mica Hinkle has been involved in those conversations. It's not something that we would recommend to require, but just if they should choose that path, we are prepared to offer technical assistance for, for trying out a new, a new model such as that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Hill.
Apologies. I had written down a question that I did not ask. Can you elaborate a little bit more on residual receipt loans? And the reason why I ask is more in behalf of community. We've had this conversation in public before, but I think it's worth asking it again. When folks see the word loan, I think the majority of us might envision, well, you get a big chunk and then you make monthly payments and you pay back interest. How is a residual receipts loan different than that? And then why is it recommended here?
Thank you for asking the question. So it is a little bit different than a typical loan. The loan recipient only would make payments if there were excess funds available after paying for operating and capital expenses with rental income. And so there is not an expected timing and amount of payments on a regular basis. And the reason we have recommended a residual receipts loan is because it does allow the city to have additional involvement in the project over time and to have a different level of involvement and monitoring of the project over the long term, given the level of investment of this particular award recommendation versus some of the smaller awards that we would recommend giving out as grants.
I'm just curious. Somebody did not ask this in advance. At any given time right now, how many residual receipt loans are we managing right now? Just, it doesn't have to be an exact number, but is it a handful or is it over 10? I'm just kind of curious how many we've managed.
So I can tell you that we have stood up two residual receipt loans in the past two years. To give you an exact number of those outstanding, I would, I would need to look into that and get back to you. And I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, we can get the exact number for you, but it's more in terms of handful on this. Definitely, I would say under 10.
Yeah. And I guess is the, is the effort pretty, pretty passive on our part? We, we receive, we receive you know, reports from, from the folks pretty regularly or how does that, how does that work?
So, so the city both tracks interest accruals, so that happens in our finance department. And then the city should be annually monitoring the financials to verify that, no, the loan recipient, you know, did not need to pay us that year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Kurtz.
One more follow-on question around that, not necessarily the loan piece, but do we follow the previous receipts of the, the awards of the NOFA and how it's been used? Of previous times, I think we did this twice before, once before, twice before, where we've done awards. And I'm curious if we get reports from the recipients of how they've used those funds and did it go as far as they hoped it would go.
So I, so I sort of had, I have two answers, two, two pieces that I want to say. One is that even if we do a grant award, that's based on, and it's a a grant reimbursement. And so we do see, we, we, we don't hand over a lump sum or a check. We do see, we do get receipts and then reimburse for those. So that is one way that we track expenses. And then the other piece is that built into the agreements, we are able to ask for reporting from our award recipients.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any other questions. I don't have any myself. I'll open the public comment on this item. Anyone in the chambers? Welcome.
Hi there. My name is Anna Holm. I'm Associate Project Manager overseeing the Terellinda Manor project for Bridge Housing Corporation. I grew up a few miles away, so I was really excited to come back and listen in on all the exciting topics today. And especially grateful to the city for recommending our project for a funding award today. I speak for Bridge when I say that Terellinda Manor is an excellent match for the city of San Rafael's priorities to preserve housing affordability and provide units to larger families. Terellinda Manor is the largest preservation opportunity and project in the city's recent history. Preservation is the process of ensuring long-term affordability of existing housing stock through acquisition and rehab. While new construction projects are critical to curb the housing crisis here in the state, preservation projects are important ventures as well for maintaining quality, affordable housing for communities, especially in Marin, where housing costs are on the rise. Displacement is a constant threat. Marin County is cost prohibitive. More and more people are getting pushed out of the county and must commute further to their day jobs. Most of the residents at Terellinda Manor are in service industry positions in the county and are vulnerable to displacement. The average annual income of the current residents is just under 52,000. The recommended award of 1 million will go directly towards the rehab cost to address deficient conditions from the building's original construction in the 1960s, as well as other significant maintenance needs from being in six years of operations. The rehab work will help sustain the property for decades to come. Terellinda Manor is an important project for the city and the county as it permanently preserves affordable housing here, helps prevent displacement, and with the proposed rehab scope provides high-quality rental units to residents. So thank you for your time, consideration, staying late for this. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for staying late. Thank you, Anna. And could you stop, stop your screen share for public comment? Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers like to comment on this item? Okay, not seen anyone, anyone online like to comment on this item?
If anyone would like to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if you are commenting by phone, please press star nine to raise your hands. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. I do see one hand at this time.
Hi, my name is Corey Haraga and I work for Eden Housing as the project manager for the 3301 Kerner project. And I just wanted to publicly thank the city staff and the work and support of this project. Their work towards helping us close on our financing and supporting the fund for this project has been extremely helpful. Their quick and thorough work is particularly helpful, especially with affordable housing financing where deadlines and schedules are very strict. So thank you to Lisa Lisa Gaitis, Chris Hess, Alexis Kaptanian. I also wanted to publicly thank the city of Centerfield Building Department, Don Jepson and his staff for the work reviewing and approving our plans for the building department as we were closing our construction financing where again deadlines and schedules are extremely important. So yeah, thanks again. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council for your funding consideration and behalf of Eden Housing, just want to thank you all as we work towards providing more permanent supportive housing in Centerfield. Thanks.
Thank you, Corey.
I see no other hands raised at this time. I'll just give it a couple of seconds. And I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and bring it back for comments. And I'll start with Councilmember Bushy. Go ahead.
It's always great to see when we add the last piece that makes it happen. A delight to do that. That's what we, that's what this fund is for. The projects are, I agree with Councilmember Hill, some of these numbers are just staggeringly expensive. But we're making good use of what little funds we have and I'm making big difference and I will be. making good use of what little funds we have, and making big difference. And I will be, I'm happy to support the matter when we vote on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
I think this is great. I really, I appreciate having this ability to be able to recognize the work that's being done in the community to support affordable housing units, and a very direct way of doing it, and not just sort of the lip service. So really putting some funding towards the work that needs to happen. So I'll be happy to support.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Building on the comments of my colleagues, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is one of our great tools. I am very grateful for the past council that supported this, that gives us this mechanism to get affordable housing over the line. As I've joined in, as I join the council, learning about affordable housing and funding mechanisms is its own universe. And what I would liken it to is very much the metaphor of a snowball going down a hill. It does require a lot of, well, additional snow as it makes rotations. And sometimes we've had to fund things once, twice, and we might have to do it again. But ultimately, the outcome is manifested as housing for folks that really need it. And I really appreciate the comments around preservation as well. These are also housing units that need to be made permanently available. So I am looking forward to the next opportunity for this, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to be replenished against, that we can have this kind of deliberation in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Earlier in our agenda, we talked about the importance of having permanent supportive housing, and this is exactly tying back to that. I mean, these dollars are so important. They're flexible, which I think we've alluded to, but because they give us the ability to add our little bit to these really big projects. And big thank you to Bridge and Eden for the work that you do here in Marin County, and the work you do here in San Rafael. I mean, when you look at the list of all those funding sources, you could be building in other communities, but you choose to build here. So I'm glad that we can do our part to help out. And Canal Alliance has been an incredible partner in our community as well. So these are precious, and we know that the fun comes in when we bring in other commercial projects. So it kind of ebbs and flows. So it's always great when we actually have the dollars to distribute. It might be a while till the account gets built back up. So thank you, Alexis, to you and your team for all the work. I know there were a lot of conversations that went into tonight's item. So thank you. And I'm excited to ask for my colleagues to make a motion on this item, please.
All right. Like to adopt, make a motion to adopt resolution authorizing the expenditure of $1,450,000 in funds in fulfillment of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund 2023 Notice of Funding Availability.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 4-0. Thank you so much. We have one final item on our agenda this evening. We are going to convene as the San Rafael Successor Agency. Are there any items that the members would like to hold? Okay. Or from the consent calendar for comment? No, not seen any. I'll open up to public comment on the San Rafael Successor Agency Consent Calendar. Not seen anyone in the chambers. Is there anyone online who would like to comment?
If you are tuning in by Zoom and you'd like to comment, please use the raise hand feature. If you are calling by phone, please press star nine. Everyone will get two minutes to speak. I see no hands. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public, thank you Deputy Agency Secretary, I get to use that other title, I'll close the public comment. And I would request a motion on the consent agenda, please.
I move to accept the report.
Or to approve.
To approve consent.
Oh, sorry. Yes. I move that we adopt the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Member Bushy.
Aye.
Member Hill.
Aye.
Member Kurtz.
Chair Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 4-0. Thank you. Thank you all. This meeting's adjourned. And it's not tomorrow yet.